Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 26th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the work session of the Capella City Council meeting. There is a quorum present, so I call the meeting to order. At this time, we are going to reorder the agenda to complete the scheduled executive session after item number 16, which are the public service announcements. We will continue our agenda items of the regular Capella City Council as follows. We will enter into work session in the first floor conference room, followed by reconvening here for the regular city council meeting consisting of our consent agenda, the public hearing, reports. Our executive session will be conducted at that point. Then we will undertake any necessary action from the executive session, and we will adjourn. Thank you very much. We will recess to work session in the first floor conference room. We're going to enter into the work session of the Capella City Council. The time is 5:30, 2:00 PM. We have a fairly full agenda tonight. We will be reordering the agenda and cover our executive session at the end of the city council meeting. For our work session, we have item A, discussion regarding agenda items. Anybody have any questions or comments or anything to say about our agenda tonight? Councilmember Neville?
Mayor, I'd like to discuss item B on the work session, and I'd actually like to request to go into executive session and consult with our city attorney. Is that allowed?
That is permissible under the agenda, yes.
All right.
I'm so sorry.
Unfortunately, I'm going to have to ask the audience to allow us to conduct our executive session in private.
We're going to have to ask you guys just for...
I will come back out and announce it when we're in open session once again. Good afternoon. The time is 5:48. We've recessed from executive session, and we are reconvening in work session, and the public is invited to join us. And sorry for ring around the posy tonight. We were in the middle of item A, which was discussion of agenda item. Does anybody have any other comments or questions for our agenda items? John?
Mayor, I just have one question on agenda item H. Concerning item H.
Yes, sir.
That's a...
Janitorial.
Yes.
Yeah, I just had a question about when I was looking at the evaluation sheet. It talks about how some are, I guess, underbidding the lot lower than what we have budgeted for, which states not feasible 15% under budget amount. Can you explain that?
Yes, and this is an annual contract that we have every year. So we know based on history and based on our experience with our existing contractor and previous contractors, what it takes to do this job for the city of Capella and meet the expectations that we have. And those vendors undercut the bid so significantly that when we reviewed it with purchasing and with the evaluation committee, that it was determined that they could not do the job for what they... We know what our current vendor has paid its staff. They can't keep staff. And so when we evaluated all the bids, that was, we sort of drew the line and said, look, you just cannot do the job that we need done in Capella for what they submitted. So that was...
Okay, I mean, obviously, if you did the job for a lot cheaper, I prefer that. But is that where we cut off, or where it's kind of, I guess, the level is set that if it's under 15% the budget amount, that we just consider them not valid proposal?
Right. It's basically a non-responsive bid at that point, that they did not respond to what we expect, that they clearly had not investigated and explored and submitted a bid to do the job that this contract requires. And we know that costs have actually gone up since the last time we bid. And so, yes.
And by all means, I understand what you're saying. But at the same time, if they're providing a proposal, I'm thinking that all the requirements are also given to them as to what is expected for the services. Is that my...
They are. And just because someone has submitted a bid does not mean that they're a responsive bidder.
No, I get it.
And that's basically what we're saying, is we have a good number of bids that were responsive, that when we evaluate them, that we are confident they can do the job that's needed. I'll tell you, the vendor we've had, I mean, their bid went up from what we were already paying, they can't do the job. They've proven that they can't do the job. So we're using that as the basis for evaluating other companies. Tom, Steve, if you have anything more. The question is about the 15%. Yeah, not feasible under that budget.
Initially, what happened, at the end, they may make attempt to maintain service, maintain supplies and personnel. But over the course of the year, it would slowly end up where we'd be constantly out of supplies. They would have the excuse, you know, it's on order. And like currently, right now, we've had times where the current company hasn't been able to staff buildings, where we've had crews not show up because of the staffing issues at this amount. And at even lower amount, there's no way that it would be feasible for them to come close to this amount of quality service that we expect.
But we would have had some sort of a contract that if they did not perform as agreed, there would have been some sort of repercussion or penalty of such?
Cancel the contract, go out for bids. We're trying to get a contractor that we can keep for...
No, I get it, but I'm saying there would have been a contract in place that if they did not perform as they agreed or proposed, there would have been some sort of, I guess, penalty or something to that effect.
Correct. And even with our current one, it was, we, like, we've had a couple options where we could have renewed them for further, you know, further one-year options, and we've chosen not to do that because of that. We didn't terminate the contract early because we were so close to the rebid, the new normal contract time. So we just went ahead and did our bid. And Mr. Ellis from purchasing had checked with other cities, local cities, Dallas and Carrollton, and the anticipated increase on contracts is 15%. And we were actually slightly less than 15%. We're about 13.9% increase. So we, even with the increase, we have done quite well in the standards of what other cities are seeing because of the cost, increased cost of labor and materials since the pandemic.
Okay. And then the second part was, I guess, with all the bidders, and I get it, if they're 30% above, they're basically out. And I get that. It's just that when they were cheaper, do we also cross-check their references, how they have provided to other cities and see how they have actually done with that kind of proposal?
Yes, we did. We called some of the references, and basically, the answers that we would get would be, yes, they're our contractor. I mean, they really wouldn't want to go into details as far as if they're happy with them or unhappy with them. And the companies that were the lower amount ones, they did not have contracts as large as what the city of Capella would be. It's more of like one-off buildings or smaller accounts. Maybe they're cleaning the floor of a building for a particular company, but not the whole building. So that's on the, reflects on the reference points on the evaluation sheet.
Yeah, can, question for you. Did the vendor put in writing that they are unable to perform the duties for the agreed upon amount?
No. No, that's our evaluation on those low vendors, on those low bids.
Anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Item B is American Rescue Plan, ARP funds update. Tracy and Mindy?
Yes.
And before we get started into this, Mr. Hager, could you, I think you had a few items to comment about here.
Yes, Mayor and council, as a result of the executive session, I was asked, and became aware of a situation where two of the council members may be potential participants in part of the program, the ARP-A program, as being business owners. The council had decided they wanted to move ahead with a project that's on there to assist local businesses along a certain area of town, under certain general qualification. And it is now apparent that under that program, the two of your council members are eligible. Under your ethics ordinance, which you passed, both of the individuals indicated that they declined consideration for the ethics part of this. However, under state law, they qualify because of the amount of money that's involved. They qualify as having a statutory conflict of interest. That conflict of interest would indicate that if they're a business owner that owns more than 10% of a business, that would receive a benefit that's not generally available to all the public, that they would then have a conflict of interest, which the statute says they may not participate in the vote or the discussion of the agenda item. Since you are having a discussion about that portion of the ARP program, both those individuals cannot participate in the discussion or decision with regard to that part of the program. I would ask them to recuse themselves and remove themselves at least from the table. Because you only have a limited number, you have to have five members under your home rule charter to conduct a meeting, and that excludes the mayor. So you have to have five council members. If both these members were to recuse themselves and remove themselves from the room, then you would break the quorum, because then you'd only have four members of the council present. So I ask that they remove themselves from the table, they not be recognized, that you and other council members not direct any questions to them, the staff not direct any questions from the room, and they may not participate but remain in the room for the purposes of maintaining the quorum. That's an amendment.
Thank you. Thank you. Andrew, you had a question?
Yeah. Mayor, are we going to have the seventh council member present today?
It's unknown. Rihanna's flight was delayed at least once today. Her current arrival time hasn't been updated, but it's not until 7:20 PM. And I don't, I can't honestly tell you if she's going to be here or not. I'll ask outright, is, does this put us or Kevin and Flip in any risk having them sit in the room and be present?
Well, I want them and the public to understand. They may whistle, text, tweet, raise their eyebrows, smile, try to get attention of anyone, and anyone participate in the program. And this is to protect them.
Just don't breathe.
I will allow small, big breaths so that you can maintain your position. That's why I normally would ask them to remove themselves from the room so that they don't get accused of it. So I'm going to ask that they leave. I have shut the door to the kitchen so they can hang out in the kitchen.
So now, but this is only on the two specific points that are, that they're subject to, correct?
Yes, it's just like the budget. If, for example, if a council member had a contract with the city and that was part of the budget, that little part of the budget would actually have to be voted on separately without them present. This is the same kind of scenario we have here.
Okay.
And I want to explain to the public, there's nothing evil by the fact that they're here. They're local residents, okay? And they're business owners in your community. So don't read anything into it other than the fact that they have special interests and can't participate in vote. And that's for this legislative purpose, they can't.
But it will be okay for them to listen to Mindy and Tracy?
They can listen. They're citizens of the community. They absolutely can listen.
Good. Glad to hear that.
I'm just hungry.
Now, I said they could breathe. But if, and so I've closed that room off, so I'll make the kitchen part of the room. That's my official...
Your contribution.
You want a second opinion?
Written opinion. Well, at least you're there with the pizza.
I'm going to be eating, so...
All right. So whenever we get to that part of the program?
Right now.
It's right now?
Yes.
Okay, come on, guys.
Well, so the structure of the presentation for this evening, so we are going to provide an update on the ARP, so the priorities. So generally speaking, I'm going to provide a status on all of the key projects that were included in the spreadsheet. That will include more projects than just the business support programs. I will be asking for some direction from the council related to some of the payment options that were discussed as an outcropping of the conversation the council had related to the home state. So there were a couple ideas related to different options on how we could make payments to residents, whether that was our over-65 residents or residents as a blanket category. And so I can provide some, and prepared to provide some information to you on how those could be structured. And I'm looking for feedback from council on that. And then Mindy, Director of Community Development, will be providing an update on some of the requested information that was a follow-up on the initial presentation for the business support programs. So we will be broken up into sections so that it naturally might be able to have a breakpoint to allow them to leave. Okay? Okay, so this is the spreadsheet that we put together that was the summary of the prioritization exercise that council went through back in January. When we initially talked through this, so the city of Capella was allocated $10.2 million through ARP funds. The items that are listed here, initially, when we talked through this in January, March, the total cumulative total for all of those projects was just over $12 million. So at that point, council had provided direction that the priority projects that we were going to move forward from a due diligence and funding standpoint was everything that was included in priority bands one through six. So at that point, we have, so from that point forward to today, we have moved forward with those projects. I do want to highlight a couple changes, and those are in yellow on your screen. So DeForest Lift Station was initially included on this spreadsheet for an amount of $1.5 million. This project is funded through our water and sewer fund. We have accounted for this project within our rate study, so it is something we have planned for in our future bond issue for that fund. And so in terms of creating some additional flexibility for the council, we are recommending that we not include DeForest Lift as an ARP-funded project. We would still continue forward with our plans for that project, so removing the ARP funding does not remove the project from our work plan. It just essentially places it back where it was in our water and sewer fund for fiscal year '25, '26. We are also recommending that we remove the fire department bunker gear project off of the ARP funding list. That was identified on our original spreadsheet at $100,000. So with those two changes, we now have an available total that is unallocated of, just shy of $3 million. One of the items that we will be seeking some council direction on are those projects that are identified in band seven and eight. And so I want to spend just a moment to give you a quick refresher, because it's been a moment since we've talked about those projects, because they were not initially included in the prioritization that we've been working on. So in band number seven, we have the fiber expansion and the pavement replacement at the Creekview neighborhood. So the fiber expansion is a project that would replace all of our, most of our old fiber. So there's some fiber in the ground that's probably 10 years old. So replacing that fiber, expanding the capacity, so we would essentially be doubling the capacity of what the fiber that we'd be putting back in the ground. And then we would also be creating additional redundancy and connectivity amongst and between our city facilities that we currently don't have today. This project is kind of a precursor if council wants to consider one of the items that's identified in band number eight, which is the citywide LTE network. So I will jump just a quick minute. So we can do the fiber expansion standalone by itself, and from the priority standpoint, that is something that we are recommending. The citywide LTE, the fiber expansion that we would be working through in priority band seven, would be the backbone for us moving forward with the proof of concept for that citywide LTE network. Essentially, what that is, is a private LTE network for securing our critical infrastructure with essentially the goal of having all of our city devices on that, operating on that secured private network. So instead of, so for example, our SCADA system today, that's monitoring water, wastewater, that is currently on radio analog system. This would upgrade that to a fiber system. It would be secure because it's standalone. Nobody else is using any of the bandwidth for that, for that network. And so from a security standpoint, it puts us in a much stronger position for all of the critical infrastructure that we have. So the funding that is identified for that citywide LTE, that is a proof of concept number that would essentially get us the propagation study to understand where the coverage is, where the towers need to go, where all the infrastructure needs to be put so that we have the coverage that we need. It would include the equipment and then the proof of concept for the SCADA system to see how that would work. So that's those two. The pavement replacement project at Creekview, so the Creekview HOA right there off of Denton Tap, and we have received actually a couple emails from residents of that neighborhood. Now, there are two projects, and they've kind of gotten a little bit twisted up. So there is the project that we've identified here for ARP funding, and that is to replace the concrete pavement that is, as you drive into and out of that neighborhood, it is in not very good shape. We've done some repairs, interim repairs and patching. It has been on our street inventory list in terms of being a location that we will need to address at some point. So our part of that project is the pavement, replacing the curb, replacing the side rock, replacing all the turf that's going to get disturbed, all of the design, the traffic control. That's what this project would include. The emails that you've received referencing a project is, the HOA is also wanting to pursue their own project, which they're hoping to do in conjunction with our project, because it'll make the whole entryway look better. And so the HOA is wanting to replace their entryway monument and all of their landscaping. That is something the HOA is doing wholly separate and apart from anything that we would be doing on an infrastructure side. So that's the pavement replacement at Creekview. And then the Teams voice hardware and licensing, so that is essentially replacing the end-of-life Cisco phones that we currently are using for all employees at every facility that we have. This will essentially better facilitate and allow us to work more efficiently from anywhere because we will be able to receive phone calls through our laptop wherever we are. And so essentially, we would eliminate most of those handsets that are on the desks now, and then convert to an upgraded license through Microsoft Teams, which then would allow that Teams voice calling on all of those phones where we've got the outdated Cisco systems right now. So those are the four projects that currently council has not provided direction to move forward with in any sort of due diligence fashion. The additional projects, so I do want to talk through a couple projects that have been brought up in discussions, because there are a few that, one that is eligible for ARP funding and one that is not. So I know one of the things that has been brought up is can we, can we write a check to and provide payment to all residents in the city of Capella as kind of an offset for their, the impact that COVID's had on them? And so that is not an eligible expenditure, and that is because writing a check to offset that kind of impact is not a governmental function. So that's not something that is within the scope of what we normally do. And so if we just say a blanket check to all residents who are living here in the city of Capella, that would not be eligible for ARP funding, which is not to say that the council couldn't entertain that same concept. It would just be with city funds instead of the ARP funds. The other idea that has been, that we've been vetting internally is a utility billing credit for seniors who are receiving the over-65 discount. So this is an area that could, would be eligible to be funded via ARP. And essentially, what would happen is we would identify a public health impact to a specific class of residents within our community. So the over-65 would be kind of our specific class that we've identified. We would next then identify how this class was impacted differently than other residents within our community. The CDC, you only have to go to the CDC website, and they have many, many, many pages that specifically outline the different ways in which our elderly residents and population are impacted differently from COVID. So whether that is underlying health conditions, whether that's if you have, get COVID, you are more likely to be more severely impacted by COVID. And it literally could be, you know, the disparate impact, if you have COVID, is a different animal. All of those over-65 population, they were eligible to do things before the regular population were, because there was a recognized higher risk for those individuals as it related to vaccines and boosters and all that stuff. So once we kind of identify what that impact is, then we would be identifying what that proportionate response would be to kind of offset that impact. And so the idea on having a utility billing credit appear on the bills of our over-65 residents who are currently, so we know who that, who that population is, because they're signed up for our over-65 discount through our water billing system. If we applied a $100 credit to those individuals, the budget impact for ARP funds, to the ARP funds on the available balance that we had, that was just under $3 million, was just shy was just shy of $230,000. You know, certainly if you want to entertain amounts other than a hundred dollars, that's just a multiplier. The, the number of accounts that we've based this on is going to be different than what Kim is going to present to you when she walks through the homestead conversation later this evening. That is because that number, so our, our number is about 300-ish accounts different. So this is based on 2,294 over 65 discounted accounts. And there's a number of different reasons why that is. It could be the person who has the account is not over 65, but there's a household, I'm on the deed and DHCAD, oh my goodness, it's been a long time. We are not in the Harris County prison. DCAD has identified that the, that person owns the home on the deed and the title is over 65. So there's, there's renters, there's move outs, so all of those things are what kind of contributes to the difference, but that's the number that we have used. So if council would like to entertain this option as a project, that is something that would be eligible through ARP. I know we have, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but if there are additional ideas that you have as council members have been approached by members of the community about, anything else that we can start some due diligence on in terms of eligibility and that sort of thing, I'm happy to take those either tonight or later on via email or through mic or anything like that. But that is an option for council to consider. So in terms of council direction for my portion of our conversation tonight, I am seeking direction on whether you'd like to include any of those projects from bands seven or eight, whether you would like to move forward with us getting the mechanics on the backend of the system to implement a utility billing credit for our seniors over 65. And then Mindy was going to, it will walk you through, as I mentioned, the updated information on the business support programs. And I think one of the things that she will be asking you is if there's an expansion in scope, whether you would like to expand the dollars that are allocated to that project or yes, to those two programs. So that's, that's, that is the direction we are seeking at this moment, and so I'll pause to entertain questions from council on at least my part of this.
Now let's, I'm going to start with John. Okay. Thank you, Tracy, for that information. A few questions I have was, is for the citywide, citywide LTE network, is this something that, that the staff had already had planned to implement at some point? And is that something thought of in terms of being budgeted to as well if it wasn't for the ARP funds?
Correct. So it is a project that, so let me back up. What I also meant to mention to you all that everything that is on that spreadsheet was already vetted as an applicable ARP expenditure. Everything that's on there were projects that internally at a staff level, we've had conversations around knowing that at some point we'd like to move in, in that direction. So for example, on the LTE, that is, we've already begun engaging in just kind of preliminary conversations with consultants who do this type of thing to even just understand what kind of costs we're looking at and what would that get us? And so yes, the answer to that is yes. That is something we've been considering. Is it included in the budget you're going to see in August? No. Is it included in our five-year forecast? No. So $2 million is a, is a big, but it is something that in terms of what is the next step in service to make sure that we can provide that service, that is one of the things we've been talking about.
And what, so what is the ongoing cost such as maintenance-wise? If that was implemented, what would the cost to continue to, I guess, upkeep it? And how long would that be before we ever, we have to kind of contemplate upgrading again?
Yeah, so this is a long-term project. What we're representing here is, is the proof of concept, just to see if, if this thing would worry, what it would look like and to have some critical infrastructure in place. All of those conversations around kind of what would the ongoing maintenance look like, we have, we have not gone through the due diligence part of that process. Part of that is because it's not budgeted, part of that is because we haven't gotten a, either a thumbs up of at least continue that due diligence to find out some of those answers. So I mentioned we've had at least some preliminary conversations, but it has not been something that is, it's not front stove where we are working at that level to kind of have, have that solidified.
So it's not critical at this moment for that, to have to try to implement that at this time?
It, it is low on the priority list in, in terms of what you're seeing here.
I have a few other questions, but just go ahead.
Well, I had, so I had a question on LTE. Was either one of yours on that?
John actually hit on a couple of my questions, but if you want to follow up, I'm fine.
Don, did you have anything? Was yours on LTE?
No.
Okay. So let me ask my LTE question and get off of that. There were some aspects in the Smart City Board that covered LTE networks. Are they aware of this and have they, I know this was part of what they were looking into.
Yes, so Jared is the, Jared and Kent have been working in tandem with this project. So yes, this is something that is consistent with where the Smart Board wants to go. But again, it's a long, it's a long-term, it's a long-term project.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
So I wanted to ask about the, the Creekview project. So just so I'm sure that's Denton Tap in Bethel Eastside, correct?
Eastside.
On that reconstruction, about how far, like, what is the, the scope of that project? Like, how far back onto Bethel is that looking to go?
I've got the scope here. Also, Mike Garza's sitting there who may know that off the top of his head because he's, he's got a steel trap memory.
I have a map. Pull it right here, please.
Essentially, where the, the, yeah, the brick pavers, the brick pavers are all going to come out.
All that, okay.
Yeah, all the brick pavers.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Don?
The fiber network that you had talked about, that is sort of exclusive of the LTE. We would do that regardless, sort of regardless, right?
Yes.
That would, that would probably be a priority, but you, you were saying that would be the backbone for a potential LTE network.
Correct. We couldn't do the citywide LTE without the fiber. We can move forward with fiber without the LTE.
Okay, we would still need the fiber for other.
Yes, and I will also maybe caveat that, that this fiber project is not a precursor to providing an infrastructure backbone that would be like citywide Wi-Fi.
Sure.
Okay, so this is, this is really about connectivity for the existing city facilities and providing redundancy. So if we've had contractors cut that fiber, I don't know how many times, so that we have consistent connectivity.
And the, so seven and eight, you said, clarified, none of those are in the five-year forecast or anything yet? They're just all sort of conceptual?
Not, so the, the really expensive one, so the LTE network is, you will not see that anywhere. I know Creekview is on the, the street inventory of streets that are, that need to be identified, that have been identified that need to be repaired.
Okay. So it was, it was going to get done in the future at some point, no matter what?
Yes.
Okay, but it's just not.
Same with fiber, same with Teams. Jared actually had Teams in the budget last year. We did not, we did not move forward with it. So it's, that's a project that for us internally would be important.
Okay. And then on the options that you, you talked about, the utility bill credit. So we were talking about, okay, so payment to all residents, that was not eligible at all.
Correct.
Utility billing credit. Now we're only doing utility billing credits targeted for over 65. So am I to assume that anything that is targeted to all water bills would not be eligible? Is that a fair?
Because I'm not sure that I'll be able to identify the impact that's disparate for all of Capel as opposed to other parts of the metroplex, for example. For seniors, it is very easy to identify what that impact is. The CDC tells us they're a different classification from the, the general population.
And that $230,000, did I understand that that's sort of the, a preliminary idea of what it would?
That would be at a hundred dollars credit.
Okay.
And then you could just scale it up from there or scale it back.
Okay, that's what I had.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back.
So are we staying on that slide?
I'm going to go back to Creekview.
Okay.
I, I was just talking to Kevin, and I, I drove there and I just didn't find much, I guess deterioration, but we were just talking about this, the paper, right? Is there a reason why we actually go with this type of paper that kind of seems to deteriorate faster than the concrete, like any other road that we put in?
I'm going to have to defer to Bullock Road C1L.
We don't need, we don't need. We replaced pavers with stamped concrete.
So this will be?
Because they, they've actually held up pretty well over the years, but there's a slickness to them. So, and they are kind of hard to maintain. So we've, we replaced pavers when we were doing a project with stamped concrete, so.
So this will be?
Be stamped concrete, right?
Okay. That's the question I had. Thank you.
If you did, I see you raise your hand.
No.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. She did ask about additional project or something like that.
Yeah.
So I, and, you know, we just recently had, all of us received an email about Bullock Road. I guess, is it Bullock Road or?
Yes, Bullock and Hell.
Yeah. So it seems like there really need to be, it needs to be addressed because I don't know what happened over the years, but it seems like the road has actually gone higher and higher and making the houses lower and lower to the point, drain point. So I'm just wondering, well, I want to put that into a project because it seems like they're really in desperate need of getting that fixed.
So we are setting up a neighborhood meeting to talk with the neighbors because we really need to get some level of consensus because there's different options and some options have a big impact on the character of that neighborhood. But solving that drainage issue is not easy without making those big improvements. And so we're, we're evaluating, I mean, the options are limited. It's very flat. It drains to the north, but it doesn't drain well.
Right.
The ditches are shallow, the utilities are right under the ditch. I mean, there's, you know, we're, we're really limited in what, what's out there. Really, we need to, we need to do a utility replacement.
Right.
We need to improve drainage. The streets need improvement. So you're right, and it is a project we've kind of, we've had on our radar for a while. We just haven't been able to get to a point of consensus of where we, where we need to go. So we're setting up a neighborhood meeting. We'll invite all the neighbors out and try to reach some level of direction on where that, where that project meets.
I'm going to say what you're not saying, if that's okay? They haven't been able to get all the neighbors to agree to the same thing.
No, I agree. I, I will actually talk to them.
Okay.
And they understand the, I guess, the severity of the, the issue now because it is draining, well, it's not draining, and their house is a lot lower. But I'm not sure to what extent you're actually looking, but it looks like even if you just only fix just the front part of it, the back part where the ditch is not deep enough to, or even scoped enough for the water to drain. But the residents do understand that they have to come to consensus because, and again, we don't want to redo, you know, repeat over and over doing that thing, but that's probably the thing I wanted to kind of put up.
Yep.
Don?
I did want to ask about the DeForest Lift Station. So you said we pulled that one out?
From ARP funding.
From, from your recommendation for these funds?
Yes.
It would, it was going to be covered by the Water and Sewer Fund?
Yes.
Did I also hear you say it would actually be a bond issuance for that fund?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So what was, was there something specific why that particular project was pulled out of the ARP funding? Is it just because it had another funding source versus?
Yes.
Another project or a combination of other projects? Or what was, was there some?
Yes, so scope and scale, it, it provided some additional flexibility. And it was also, we had some alternative funding that was built into the rate study. It really made sense to kind of move forward with the plan that we have in our Water and Sewer Fund.
Okay.
It was one of the, the few projects that we had kind of coming down the pipe that, that really kind of met some of the criteria that we felt applied here. But as we were kind of looking through, all right, so, you know, how do we create some additional options for, for council? That was, that was the easy one in terms of we've got some, another funding source.
And when we talked about it being in the rate study, we're talking about the, the fact that the debt service was already planned for, and so it was backed in when we decided what the rates would be.
Yes.
Is that, is that a fair statement of how, what you mean by that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
So.
I'm sure that, let Mindy go through hers.
You want Mindy to go through hers? Okay. And then we can come back to this.
Come back to.
Okay. Thank you.
So I understand what's. Mindy's getting ready to do the presentations on the business grants. Right.
Yeah. Chair.
Take chairs.
Of all the contingencies that you planned for, this is not one.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Tracy said, I am going to discuss the two business support grants that we talked about on March 8th. On March 8th, when we did the last presentation, City Council did request some additional information, and so I'll provide you with that information shortly. But just as a reminder tonight, I am seeking input and direction from City Council on what you want to do before we can proceed with either of these programs. One of the programs that we're discussing tonight is related to the businesses impacted by COVID, and one program is related to the businesses that are impacted by the reconstruction of South Beltline Road. But again, both of these were designed to support our small businesses as they work to recover. Both of the programs are grant programs. The first one is the Business Rent and Mortgage Assistance Grant Program, and the second one is the Revenue Recovery Assistance Grant Program. And I'll just run through a quick recap of what was presented at the March 8th meeting just so, to remind you of what we talked about so that we can move forward from there. And so as we said, several of the businesses are struggling right now to recover fully from COVID-19. Excuse me. And so the Business Rent and Mortgage Assistance Grant Program is designed to be very similar to what the rent assistance program was that we did with CARES funds back during the height of COVID-19. The grant is designed to assist small businesses with their rent or their mortgage, and it's open to all City of Capel small businesses as defined by the Small Business Administration that will be eligible to apply, apply based on the criteria we set. It will be a one-time grant. The maximum grant amount is $10,000, and grants will be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. Then we'll have a continuous call for applications until the funds are depleted or until City Council reallocates the funds. Staff is proposing to use $650,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act to fund this grant program. And the eligibility that we talked about at the March 8th meeting was that they must be located within the city limits of Capel, excuse me, they must be in current compliance with the City of Capel Code of Ordinances. They must not be in any litigation with the City of Capel, must have a physical storefront in the City of Capel, and must have a current utility bill showing a Capel address for the business. Excuse me. Council did request information on the criteria that other entities are requiring to qualify for a grant using ARPA funds. So, sorry, I'm going to go ahead and move these around. After we did, after staff did some research, we found seven other Texas cities that are providing small grant, small business grants using ARPA funds. There are numerous others throughout the country, but we only found seven in the state of Texas. There's information up on, on the screen, but I've also provided you with a handout that has a little additional information that wouldn't fit on the screen. As you can see, the qualification requirements vary from entity to entity, but those that require revenue loss range anywhere from any loss in revenue or any increase in expenses all the way up to a 25% loss in revenue. So before we move on to the second grant program, there are a few questions that I need you all to provide direction on so that we, we kind of know how we want to proceed. So the first question is, do you want to proceed with a need-based program? And I know that was one of the questions that was on the table at the March 8th meeting. So that's the first question is, do you want this to be a need-based program? The second? The second one is, if you do want it to be a need-based program, what criteria would you like for qualification? And if any, what documentation would you like provided to demonstrate loss? And what would you like the time period of loss to be? So the first question we need to answer is, do you want this to be a need-based program?
Don?
So my opinion is I don't want it to be a need-based program. I do have a question because like on that list, on this list, many of the other programs are criteria or need-based. I want to make sure, I want to confirm that we're not out of bounds or anything with any criteria set by the feds when they sent the money to us or anything else, that we are indeed, it is eligible to use the funds without having that needs-based criteria.
Yes, so we did check with the auditor, um, and by we, I don't want to take credit for that, finance checked with our auditor. And did get, get confirmation that this is an eligible expenditure for ARP funds. It is a basic government set, service that we currently do in economic development, so that is why it is, um, eligible for, for, for this, those funds.
So it's a basic, under economic, we would give systems under economic development at times, right?
We, we provide incentives. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we feel confident, even though the other entities are requiring it, okay. Well, that's my opinion. If you're looking for direction from one, um, I, I would prefer it not to be need-based for the administrative burden that would put on staff and, um, just ease of deploying the money. I would prefer it not to be need-based.
So, so John mentioned about administrative burden. To what extent would that be a burden to have, for example, Dallas County talked about, I think, was it 15% revenue loss difference?
Dallas County requires a 25% loss.
The 25%, and then I guess it was, Fort Bend was 15%, so and so, right? So how much of a burden would that be if that was something that we had implemented as a part of the requirement?
It would just be part of the calculations that we would have to do to, to guarantee that they met that requirement.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I said last time, I'm, I'm all about helping businesses, but I'm, the money, you know, it should be for the people, for the businesses that are actually in need of help, uh, not just to be given away just because we have it. Again, struggling businesses, I do want to help them, but the struggling businesses are the ones that, you know, I think the money should be going to, especially if you have some project that this could be used for as well, so. I, I still feel the same way as last time, that we should be looking into the need base.
I'm gonna speak up here. I'm the ex-official member of the Chamber of Commerce. That means I don't get to vote at the chamber meeting, but I get to listen and I get to present. And I was at their meeting last week, and I've never seen a group of people that were more adamant about their need. John, I understand what your point is, but this is, I want to remind you, this is a grant. It is an economic stimulus grant. Whether you're in need of it or not, the federal government had, has decided to make these funds available to stimulate the economy. And it, it's not to save businesses. We've lost over 73 businesses in Capel in the last two years anyway. And hopefully this will help, help some of the others survive, but it is not, it is a grant. So I, you know, I, I heard a, I heard a completely different story at the chamber.
Mayor, if I may, with all due respect, I understand that, but the money that could be used for many of the things that we need in the city as well. Again, I'm, I'm all for helping businesses that are in need of help, but this seem, it's, I don't want it to be where we have this money, let's just give it away because we have the money. And that was a point that I made last time, which is, I mean, let's help the businesses that are in need, sure. Let's use that fund for things that we can help my need because we could, we might be constrained with the tax changes as well. There are a number of things that still could be used with that, with that fund, not just give it away because we have it. It's a grant. Let's give it away. That, that was, that's probably precise my point.
Well, I think if you take a look at the amount that we're talking about, this is, we're not going to impact the, the budget because this can't go back into the city budget.
But the, the, but the money, like we're allocating for some other projects, it could be done the same thing too.
Will you come up with any other parameters to allocate to? None that are eligible anyway. Don?
I just, additional comment, I would, so I think it is about seven and a half percent of the ARP, ARP funds that we're, that we would give would be going to these programs. So I think that's a relatively reasonable, you know, allocation of those funds to put to the business community. The other thing, and this is, I know from time to time, there are different grants or different programs that you have to reveal financial information to, that you get benefit. I do get sometimes concerned you have private businesses that may not want to share broadly a lot of financial information. And I know that's not always avoidable. Sometimes it's required anyway, depending on, um, you know, what programs you get involved with, but going back to, as long as we feel confident that we won't get deemed for not having any kind of needs-based criteria. That's another reason I sort of think it's worth not having the needs criteria is somewhat protecting private information if, if possible.
Ishu?
Thank you, Mayor. Made a question for you from the March eighth meeting. Um, I just wanted to make sure. You talked about two programs like you are doing today. First one is the grant $10,000, other one is assistance for the businesses who are affected by the construction going on.
Yes, sir.
My question was, um, do they need to open up the books or through open records? If someone requests is a loss during this time of construction, that's why we are providing the grant of $5,000. Is that for this program as well as that program?
Either if we require them to provide us with information, so either program, if they are providing us information, it will be subject to open records if someone asks for it.
So can you explain to me what, what did you say to us on last time?
That's exactly what I said. Yes, sir.
So during the application process, they don't have to submit any proof that they lost revenue?
That, that depends on what you all decide tonight.
Okay, that was just the discussion that we haven't made any interaction on that subject.
So we could, we could grant the money without any stipulation, but we could grant it with them signing a waiver or a letter that said, yes, I lost revenue during COVID with notes documentation. It's completely up to you on how far you want to go with that.
Right, that's one person's opening. My question is, did we do that for the CARES Act?
So with the CARES Act, we started with a, a criteria for them to show their loss, but council made a decision to take that requirement away, that they were going to grant it to anyone that applied. So that, that's really where we came from, the first recommendation from, is that the desire of council was not to require any kind of need-based criteria. As the mayor said, on the application, you will have, they will have to sign invalid, and basically, um, signature at the end that says that everything that they have submitted is, is true. And, um, it's, it's like an affidavit. So again, depending on what we require in there, even if we require them to, them to submit some documentation, we don't necessarily have the means or a way to validate that that information is correct. We're trusting our businesses that if they sign that application, that they are submitting true, true and correct information.
So to be clear, thus far, we have not required a business to submit any proof that they lost revenue, the entire funding losses.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
John?
So, so Mindy, I wasn't part of it, but last time when we had actually asked for application, what was part of the question, what, what kind of questions were asked?
Um, oh my goodness, you're testing my, testing my memory right now.
I'm just wondering if there was a question as to, did you actually lose funding or, or to that extent or?
We did, we did have that question in the beginning, but then again, made the decision not to require that information.
Okay, but those questions were asked, basically honor system where you asked whether they actually did lose funding and if it was yes, so on, it's, it's just a, I guess, in a way of stages of questions that asked and then debate.
It, it was just, I mean, the application, yes, was straightforward application, providing their address, providing all the information to prove their eligibility that we, that we stated would be required. And, and as I said, we started with, um, did you lose revenue? And asked them to provide the information of what they lost, but did not, ultimately did not require that.
Okay, and I have second part of the question is, if I'm incorrect, but in this also says is that if they go and apply for one, they could actually apply for another as well at the same time, the two programs?
If they are eligible in both criteria, the, the construction grant is much more specific, but if they meet both of those, they would be eligible to apply for both.
If they're actually within that, I guess, boundary, they could actually apply for both.
Yes, sir.
So the only issue that I have is that this comes to, if someone applies for both and they qualify for both, let's just say, for example, or and I'm not saying that we will, but I'm afraid that if, if the first come, first pays all apply and they get both fundings, and someone who's actually trying to apply, but they're not one of the first come and first, you know, being served, they'll be left out and yet they still need the funding as well, but they're left out, out of both fundings.
Sure, so I mean, if that's something that you all want to do to make them eligible, to not allow them to be eligible for both, that would be a decision you all could make.
Not that I'm not, I'm not saying that not to make them eligible for both, but I would, I would prefer that if they actually get one funding, maybe give opportunity for the others who haven't gotten, and then if they're still available, then I don't mind them going back and doing that.
Absolutely, so we could put in there that priority would be given to those that had not received the other grant.
Vice versa, right?
Right, yes, sir.
Or that there be a three-month separation in time?
Or something, just, just to be fair that everybody gets an opportunity to be able to get that funding. It's just not one, you know, not the whole group that applies first gets everything and then some of them are left out.
One of the things we were going to do, but again, this is, we can structure this however we want, but one of the things we were going to do is just leave a rolling application and review it on a weekly basis. If we want to give priority to those that have not received the other grant, we would have to change that to where it is a drop dead application date so that we're getting all of those at the same time. But again, we can structure it however, however you all like.
And do we, do we have a definition as to what small businesses?
Um, Small Business Administration does, and it's identified by NAICS code, so we can verify that.
What S P A talked about. And then how will we go about publicizing this availability?
Sure, so just like we did last time, we'll make it available through all of our media outlets. We, we utilized, we leaned heavily on the Chamber of Commerce last time. And then we will, again, we'll put it through all of our, put it out through all of our media outlets and, and help, have the chamber help us do.
Don't get me wrong, I think we do a lot too, but I know there's a lot of people that, I think, my recollection is quite correct, that last time we didn't get as much we thought we would have get applications for. So are we doing the same thing as we have publicized last time, or is there something more we can do to try to get more people to understand there is this funding that's available?
Sure, so we could mail a letter to every business in the community as well. That would delay the start of the program, but if that's something that, that makes it, um, makes more businesses aware, we're happy to do that. So that's something we can certainly do also.
So how, how burdensome is that?
I mean, it, again, it will just delay the start of it, um, just so that we give ample time for all the businesses to get the letter, but that, again, that's something we can do easily.
Mark, you've been silent.
John, I hear what you're saying, um, about people who are, um, they really should be need-based and and I agree with that in, in a sense. I do want to make sure those people who indeed have the need get it, that they're the first ones in line. And then after that, if there's leftovers, then the, the rest of the business community can apply. And it acts as, as a stimulus program. But, uh, I mean, I don't know if we're going to have a mad rush on this, I mean, you just never know what the response is going to be. But I, I like the idea of if we restrict it upfront for, for a month, so those people can, can get in, make sure they, and they're willing to, show, hey, I lost money over, over the past year or two years or three years. And then open it up to the rest of the community.
So I'm sorry, can I, just, I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. So you're asking to make it a criteria and those that are willing to share that information would be given priority for the grants?
Yeah, like for the first month or something, or, um, and then after that, it can be opened up to the, the whole business community. I, I just don't want someone to, you know, be at the end of the line because they've been, you know, busy trying to maintain their small business and they can't pull together, um, all the information needed to share the need.
We have, we have a comment from our attorney.
If we can get away without doing this, I don't want people's financial records at the city, subject to building records. I don't, I have to start writing here because it's not confidential. Better get a statement from them that they've lost money and sign that they're penalty of perjury, and then if we get audited, they're going to get audited.
So some sort of sworn statement with?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there needs to be accountability. Don't get me wrong, I'm fine with that, but I don't want people's financial records at the city, and I don't want city employees pining through that. Because you're a lawyer, because if any of that information got out, I'd feel awful.
I think he just said he doesn't trust me is what I thought.
So we have enough trouble with their records, much less somebody else's. So it's just an unnecessary, for, for my purposes, protect y'all to have to worry about having to do. You know, we, we do the police thing and, and keep a lot of that stuff confidential because it needs to be, and that's all over there in that building and police are used to that kind of thing, or the law's used to that kind of thing here. And there's nothing in the Open Records Act to help protect, that's the other part.
So Mindy, I'm assuming that an application would include the items on your first page, which was, don't have any pending litigation against the city, be up to date and all, you have a physical address, et cetera, et cetera. And then you would include a statement, um, that I, attest that I've lost revenue during the year or the two years?
That, that will be our, that'll be another question we have to answer.
Yeah, so I, I was going to say that with the application, I guess, to the extent that we could actually put in there saying, what percentage of revenues have you lost? Is it in excess of 15%, 20%, whatever it is? And then you could actually, you know, make, uh, I guess, make them sign saying, I, you know, attest to this being true without having to disclose it. And then at least you could look at that and say, okay, these people actually lost 15% versus maybe 50% that people who lost 50% probably need more help immediately than those that might, I don't know, just kind of, I don't know, just, I'm just throwing ideas.
It gets to be the police to that.
No, I'm just saying, all you have is that checklist as to.
I don't want, I don't want to encourage people to be untruthful. I represent to get your money, Sarah, quicker. You know, so I bumped mine up to 16 because I know you did 15.
Now, just to follow up with what you were saying. You asked about administrative burden, you asked about different things related to staff. If you wanted, if you do want to demonstrate that his need is the criteria, a fixed number as opposed to a sliding scale of which we are grading and scoring. If we're having to score an application, you just add more time to the process. If the person is making an application, I'm arbitrarily picking a number, and let's say it's 15%. It show revenue decline, 15%, that's really clean. They're signing off on it and everything like that. As long as, if, if you, I'm saying, if you create something where, well, this person at 50% gets a higher point score, you just introduce administrative work. And that slows the process.
You don't need more work?
We're trying, we're trying to get the money out. We're not.
I'm trying to keep you busy.
Yeah, no, it's not. But I would just suggest to you that if you're, because the first question is, is it based on need and y'all have, you know, if you say yes, and the next question is, okay, what's the criteria? You have to tell us that. I don't know what that is. Then we can go to the next question. Don?
Sort of addressing this latest thing we're talking about, so Miss Leach, I think you mentioned, we don't, we have, we don't have all of the ARPA funds allocated currently from the priority list, correct?
Correct.
I would almost be more apt to earmark another three quarters of a million or whatever the number is for potentially a phase two of this program to make sure everybody does get access to funds if they are in need rather than, you know, maybe try to do some kind of needs base for some period of time upfront and then let everybody else have. Does that make sense? I mean, just, just potentially, we could use some of the unallocated. Does that make sense? I mean, just, just potentially, we could use some of the unallocated ARPA funds for another round if needed. And that's how we could address having enough funds for everybody, if that makes sense. So that's my first comment. And logistics again. Do we have to, is, is one of the criterias though that they have to show? So it has to replace rent, right? It has to be, it, it has to only be used for rent. But do we have to say as long as three months worth of rent is ten thousand dollars, you're eligible or six months worth of rent? I mean, do we have to give some criteria like that?
No, sir. No.
So we can just say?
They don't have to provide any proof of what they've spent it on either.
And I knew that was the case. I just was wondering if.
It's really for a four year period too, because you have to spend the money by twenty twenty-four. So they're saying that there's a past effect, but there's also a future effect.
Okay. So as long as you had, so we wouldn't have to have somebody say, yeah, I got rent, you know, two thousand dollars worth of rent or six thousand dollars worth of rent or anything. Okay. The other thing, and it is true, uh, like if you, if, I mean, if there's a, if somebody's got a piece of property in a real estate holding company. And they're paying themselves rent, I'm assuming that's eligible. Can it be, can it be used for debt service if like they're, if they own a building? And is that eligible also? They're not paying rent, but they're paying debt service because they own the building on, on balance sheet.
They need to have a storefront. So they need to have the business, not just the. So if they're, if they own the building and their business is there, they are eligible.
Okay.
If they are just the landlord, they would not be eligible.
No, I'm actually, I didn't, I wasn't clear on how I asked it. I'm asking the reverse of it. I say the business owner isn't renting actually. They actually own the building.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes.
It could be used for debt service.
Yes, it is for their mortgage or their rent.
Or rent to their closely held third party entity also, right? Like they could have the real estate property in another entity and they're paying rent, so that'd be eligible also. But the idea is you could use it for your.
Under your scenario, the, the person renting is the applicant.
Right. Under which scenario?
You said the third party. Is that third party is going to make the application?
Right, that one would be fine. Yeah, you're right. But I'm saying.
I mean, I'm just trying to track you here.
I know. If I own the, if, if I have a business and I own the building.
Right.
I can, I can apply for this and use this towards my, my mortgage, my debt service.
Not just rent expense, because they, that person's not going to have rent, is what I'm saying. It's going to be eligible for both, right? Don't tell me it's already up there and I missed it.
But we're not going to know, right?
Oh, yeah, I see.
Because there's no follow up. There's no follow up.
That's correct. Again, we will not make them to show proof of what they spent it on. Because if I have a big pot of money, I'm paying my rent or my mortgage. I don't know if it was from the check that I issued them or if it was.
Right. So we won't know anyway what they spent.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this sheet here. So I'm looking at number of counties here.
Yes, sir.
Dallas County is two point six million people, Harris County is four point seven million people. Fort Bend County is eight hundred thousand people. Do we have anything from our neighboring town like Girwin, Louisville? Addison, Galton provided these type of funding with any requirements?
So currently, these are the only cities that we found that are using ARPA funds. So if we go back to CARES, almost everyone around us did something. But if, just from ARPA funds, this is what we were able to find.
So all Mindy needs is a thumbs up from the four of you.
Yes, so, so.
On these questions.
We first have to answer if we want it to be need based. And if you do want it need based, what do you want that criteria to be for qualification?
I feel like we're back at the beginning again.
Well, we, we kind of are because we're having a chat with the question.
So I'll say, I'm going to jump to number three. I, I don't necessarily. Want people to, you know, impart the documentation. However, the questionnaire or the application. Having some sort of, I guess, a check system in a way, whether, you know, it's, it's an honor system, right? You ask questions about their losses, if there were and so, and, and I actually don't mind putting if it was more than. If it was five percent, I guess we still would give it anyway. So I don't know, some, something, just a check system, just to say that they have actually lost. Again, it's, it's helping people, whether it's five percent or fifteen percent, I'm, I'm fine with that. We just want to make sure they're, we're actually helping people that actually are in need.
So if we did yes to the first one. Criteria would be a statement that you have lost more than five percent?
See, we're going to flatten scale again, right? What if it was three percent?
Well, I mean. My, my slide is scaled, just to be clear. You had mentioned thirty percent and you said fifteen.
Fifty percent, how do you, how do you fire?
I was just saying, very static number.
I do like, there was one statement in here that says that you've lost more than you're going to be receiving.
That's actually pretty good too. But how do we, well, just a question, right?
Yeah, it's just a question.
Well, you could say you lost more than ten thousand dollars.
Well, it's, it's a question they went up to fill out and, you know, test or verify.
Two years, right, two years.
I'm good.
That's, that's what we'll, we'll get to that also.
So is that what you're thinking?
We, we just have to trust the business. They're going to be honest about this.
Sure.
Because we don't have any mechanism to enforce.
That's right.
Therefore, whatever criteria we have, it's going to be problematic, at least in my view. Because nobody's going to enforce that. Our staff doesn't probably have the time to go through all the details. So I'm okay with the proceeding.
Are you saying okay with proceeding? No, no need criteria?
If we have a consensus here with this type of statement, I'm okay too.
With what, with what he read.
Attestation is there that they lost revenue during this time and we trust them. And if we want to include the statement, I'm okay with that.
Okay. And then.
We're not, we're not there yet.
Okay.
So we, we need to give her a statement on what that attestation is going to be.
What you said is okay with me too.
Don?
Well, I'm in the camp of I'm okay with no needs criteria. Not having to, I mean, I feel like it's wind addressing, quite frankly, if we attest to something, if we're not making them prove it, I guess, I mean. So we, let's just move forward with no needs criteria would be my, my thought. But it sounds like I'm in the minority on this.
Here, we still need four.
We all have to be unanimous in here. Do we need four?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not an official vote.
No, yeah. You're just looking for consensus.
Yeah, consensus.
This, this is a consensus. Uh, it's an administrative action that, that Mindy's staff will take.
So, Mayor, I don't know what the questions were asked for the CARES Act. But I think if the application has sufficient questions to add, just a check system as, again, we're not going to follow up anyway. So sufficient checks to as to whether they needed or so, so, and so, they sign off without providing document, I'm fine with that.
I can be okay with replicating what we did on the CARES. That, that makes sense. We've done that once apparently.
Mark, could you live that?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we follow the CARES Act strategy, Biju?
Just to be clear, attestation is there?
They have, they did sign that they were, they were attesting that everything that they provided in the document was true and correct.
That's what we are discussing, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And we're able to see that before anyway, right? The application just.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Are we able to see the application, what the question was?
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to take that as a consensus. I'm seeing four.
There's not a statement of any loss.
That's what I'm going to say. Y'all may be clear, but we're not. Okay. So, well, because.
Of the last four?
Well, well, there's two things. In the CARES Act, you started the conversation with having a criteria for proving need. And then the council chose not to do that anymore. So when you just ask a generic question about the CARES Act, I don't know what she's supposed to do.
I don't know what was in the CARES Act.
Well, but, but just the conceptually, the initial start was there was a need. There was a question to the need. Council came back and said, you know what, we just need to get the money out. It's what it's for. So we took away that kind of question.
The need, all the, all the questions.
Right, right. So when y'all just said that. I'm going to defer to the latter action by the council, which just said, here's the application. And here we're attesting all this information to be true. There was no question about the need.
Okay.
I'm okay. No need.
Now, Park, Mark read a statement that said something about. All you're attesting is that you've lost more than you're going to receive, which in this case is ten thousand dollars.
And I like that.
And I think what you say, why you don't want need, having that statement.
I, I guess I could see that as innocuous. That's a little bit of a black box though. I mean, how do you determine what didn't ever happen? I mean, so, I mean, once again, you're just going back to saying, I got hurt and we're back at the same place in my opinion, which is what you're saying. But. What do you need me to say?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get movement here. Uh, in terms of the consensus of the group. That statement in and of itself to Biju's point is you're testing that the information is true. That's the best we can do. And that statement ties it to the dollar amount.
Sure. It's an honor system, but you're actually.
You're testing, say, hey, for some period of time, which we haven't got to yet, for some period of time, yes, I've lost money.
Sure.
Because of all these various reasons. It doesn't even matter what the reasons are. It's just that for some period of time, whether it goes back to twenty or twenty-one. You know, that's for y'all, right? Okay.
So is that clear?
So just, I attest that I have lost revenue.
Lost.
More than.
More than, than ten thousand dollars. Okay.
Okay. So now, what's the time period? COVID started in twenty. For the CARES Act.
For the loss?
Yeah. I mean, this is all related to COVID.
Can we just say two years? And I mean, it's going to be easy to hit that threshold, right?
We're imagining that it would be, yes.
I, I can't imagine there's a business that can't attest to.
Correct.
We've got a ten thousand dollar loss over two years, right?
Since March, let's do March of twenty twenty. That was actually when everything set down.
From that time to, till now?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that, that's what someone.
I think that'll be an easy.
Okay. Okay. So we got, we got time. We got.
Criteria.
Criteria. Documentation is the attestation.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Then we will, so, so I will, do want to point out, in the memo, I mentioned that we would bring back a resolution to approve this. We have found out since this item was done that we do not have to bring back a resolution. So we will take this as.
Direction.
Direction to move forward if, if you all.
That's what we're going to do. We're going to take tonight, we're going to go forward and start doing the advertising, postcards. You know, that's easier than a letter. Doing other venues. And so you're going to give, you need to give the businesses time, right? And plus our papers only come out. So it's going to be probably about the second week of May, probably, right?
Yeah, in May.
I mean, it's not that far, and it's here, but just so you know, that's the timing of what will happen. And to the last question, you do have latitude, granted, we're going to talk about. You, you're going to have some latitude that you could increase this amount based on the demand.
Out of, out of the register, right?
Because as you know, as we're tracking this, it's not like the dollar is getting.
True. No, that's fair.
Okay. So you'll still have the opportunity. If you find the demand is high, you can adjust accordingly.
I just wanted to make sure it was, we were thinking about that, that there are, there would be additional funds if we wanted, if we chose to use them for a phase two of this program.
If you wanted.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Sure. Okay. Now we'll move on to the next program. So the second program is designed to assist the businesses that are impacted by the reconstruction of South Beltline Road. Again, the project has to happen, but there are many businesses that will be impacted by that construction. So we're proposing a revenue recovery assistance program. And this is designed to aid restaurant, retail and personal service businesses that rely on drive by traffic and are therefore impacted by the construction. The final list of businesses that are eligible to apply for the grant will be provided at the time of the grant application. And then staff's previous recommendation was to include any retail, restaurant, personal service businesses that rely on drive by and drop in customers. That are located south of Sandy Lake Road and front either South Dent and Tap Road or South Beltline Road. And again, this demarcation was set because that's where the city has placed signs that basically tells traffic to divert another route. To avoid the construction. And so as a result, even the businesses south of Sandy Lake will likely see a decrease in traffic. So this is the slide that I showed you last time that showed basically south of Sandy Lake down to six thirty-five. So all the businesses that front that red line is who would be eligible to apply for the grant. Again, we proposed a one time grant with a maximum grant amount of five thousand dollars. They'd be awarded on a first come, first served basis. And there'd be a continuous call for applications until funds have been depleted or reallocated by city council. And so we were proposing to use a hundred thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act. And the eligibility criteria was to be an eligible business that we do, that we do list as eligible. And we had stated South Dent Tap Road, South Beltline Road, south of Sandy Lake Road. They must be in current compliance with the City of Capella Code of Ordinances, must not be in any litigation with the City of Capella, must be an open and. It must be open and operational at the time of grant application and award. Excuse me. So we do have other things planned to support the businesses along this stretch of the roadway. That will present as we go throughout this construction period, but this is the grant program that was proposed. Now, at the meeting on March eighth, there was interest from city council to include the businesses all the way south of one twenty-one down to six thirty-five. And so we went ahead and went out and made, made a list of what we proposed as a list of eligible businesses that followed through that entire stretch of roadway. Thank you. And we put together this table so that you have an idea of how many of, how many businesses would be eligible. So we had a total of a hundred and twenty-seven. Between one twenty-one and Sandy Lake Road, there was forty-seven. Between Sandy Lake Road and southwestern, there's sixty-eight. And between southwestern and six thirty-five, there are twelve. And so one of the things that we did talk about is that if you would like to include that entire stretch of roadway. That we might consider putting, allocating more funds towards this program. Or somehow giving priority to the businesses that are south of Sandy Lake because they do in fact. Have the, have the added burden of diverting traffic at that point. And so with that, there are some, some questions that we need direction on from this. So I guess the first question is if we want to proceed with this grant program. So that's our first question. Okay, I'll just run through all of them real quick. How much funding do you want to dedicate to the program? What sections of Dent and Tap Road slash Beltline Road would you like to include in the grant program? Do you want to give priority to the businesses in certain sections of the roadway and do you want the businesses to demonstrate a loss? So we'll start with the first one of, do you want to proceed with this program, this grant program?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Seeing yes is all around. Okay. So, so really, when I say how much funding do you want to dedicate, really, I guess the first question is. What stretch of the roadway would you like to include in the, uh, businesses that are eligible to apply?
I'm just going to go, is that okay?
Sure.
Is, uh, there were twelve south of Beltline, right?
South, southwestern. Yes, sir.
Okay. A hundred.
Eighty up to Sandy Lake.
At this point, I, I think I'm okay with going Sandy Lake south at least as a priority. And I was okay with the hundred, I guess, to see how it is. I'm certainly open to expanding the, you know, depending on what kind of response we get. I guess expanding it beyond that and expanding it north if, so there's forty-seven businesses. I guess I'm going back to, I do like the priority because the ones, the southern segment are the ones that are going to be impacted even more, I guess, is my initial thought. So at least give them priority.
We, last time we said five thousand.
Last time we said 5,000. And what was the amount that we proposed?
$100,000 total to, to fund the program.
Right.
So that's, that's not a tremendous amount of grants that we'd be able to, to provide. But it was almost to, to see what the interest level was, I guess.
It would be 20.
Right.
Unless you want to dedicate more funds to it. So I guess that's the other point.
That's why I asked.
I guess that's, I think it's a good starting place still.
Yeah, just to see. Could you allocate additional if you needed to?
And do we need to give priority to southern, the southwestern below R2I65, 635, 501, or anything like that?
There's only 12, right? I mean, I had the same thought, but it's a relatively small number. So that's why I was starting with Sandy Lake and going south.
We just don't want them left out, just in terms...
Sure, sure.
And, you know, going up Sandy Lake, I understand traffic diverted, but they, people still go up too close to southwestern for businesses. It's just south of southwestern are the ones that's going to be mostly impacted. So I would prefer that we actually provide the priority, in a sense, to southwestern businesses, south of southwestern first, and then open up to, I guess, Sandy, if that's...
I'm assuming that would just be like a time-based thing? Like three weeks, or two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, something? And then go to the next segment?
Again, we would have, yes, we would have to have a set application period now with this program, or to do it that way. And then all those that were received within, if any of those were south of southwestern to 635, we would obviously give those priority first. And then the others that are in during that application period would be given priority second. And if we did not reach our 20 during that time period, we would open it back up for applications, so.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
Are we...
Start south of southwestern, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, are we having similar application as to the other?
It would be very similar. Those are part of the questions also, though. So we've got the priority, do you want them to demonstrate a loss?
Is a questionnaire on the application?
It would be similar.
Put the same thing on there.
Yeah.
If they've lost more than $5,000, or at least $5,000.
Keep in mind that this construction, that started.
Right.
We had a testimony from one business on the last council meeting.
And he wouldn't qualify for this.
He would not be given first priority.
His priority is second.
He's north of southwest.
He qualifies. Right. It wouldn't be in the first round.
Right. Our first priority.
But he does qualify, right?
He does qualify, yeah.
He would just not be given priority.
Right, right, right.
It's another question I'm sorry to introduce that I have to ask is, so do we want to also give priority to those that, or make businesses eligible for one or the other? That, since we talked about it at the beginning. So do you all want to introduce that?
I just want to make sure people don't double, double funding when there are other people that are left out and want, trying to get it, and they just left out because they weren't first one to first to apply.
So probably what we would do is stagger the programs then, so that that way we would know who had received the first grant and then open up the second grant. So that way, we would be able to give priority to those that did not.
Yeah, because that's a big one also, that I'm, I would think more people would apply for that first.
Is that, is that what everyone wants?
Is there, is there a, is that a, what's that do to staff? I mean, is that difficult to stagger them, or to have these one or the other? I guess you, you have, let them be eligible for both. But is it different time period that you have to wait for the second one, or what?
I think they would be eligible for both. But if we timed them where the first grant, we went through that first, and then opened up the reconstruction grant, then we know who received the first grant clearly and easily.
Could you open up the reconstruction grant for the 12 that are actually in the south section immediately?
Yes, however, we would not know... Well, I guess they would. They'd have to make a choice on which one they wanted to apply for first if we told them that they were eligible. They would not be given priority if they had already received the other grant. So if they applied for both grants at the same time, our assumption is they would want the $10,000 grant first, so... So we can certainly do that.
I guess I'm, I say I'm indifferent, I guess I like the easier, just letting them... I mean, I guess we're concerned about funding, right? Running out of funding, it would be the concern. That's why you would stagger them.
Just trying to make sure everybody is...
To get them eligible. Because I guess you could give every business, it'd be $635,000. Like, 635 to 121 is what that would be under this program. So I guess I feel that's a manageable number if it, if worst came to worst, so. I'm fine with whatever, if y'all want to stagger them. I'm fine with that concept. I do have one other question, and I'm going to go back to, once again, eligibility. I struggle a little bit more with this one, with ARP plans, simply because this is not related to any kind of global or national situation. This is clearly a local problem that the city, you know, that was created, sort of absent of everything happening globally. So, but we do think it still is conforming to ARP paying funds. Is that right?
Yes, once again, we checked, we checked with the auditors, and they did say it was an eligible expenditure of ARP funds.
Okay. I'm fine with that, because in fact, I would probably be fine with funding at a fund balance. Or funding it another, just in another way, it'd still be in favor of the program, even if we couldn't use ARP funds. But I just wanted, once again, to make sure we were good there.
Okay, so do you have enough?
I do. I do. Thank you all very much.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you're not done with that.
Mayor, I know I'm late, but will you just summarize where we landed? Sorry.
I'm going to let Mindy do that one, ma'am.
You just summarized where we landed. We are giving grants.
We are giving grants.
We're not expecting them to give us any financial documentation.
They do not have to provide documentation. They just have to attest.
Kevin can come in and explain to her everything, what we're talking about.
Oh, do you want me to? Oh, yeah, Kevin can. They had to attest that they did lose more than what they're about to receive in the grant fund.
Can we light it on 10?
10, 10,000, yes. Thank you.
Can we leave that for... You tell them what happened.
No, we have eight minutes. The clock is ticking. So now that we have some consensus around where council would like to move forward with on those business support programs, we are back to the general ARP conversation around if there is a desire to move forward with any of the projects that are identified in band seven or eight. And then also, if you would like to move forward with us continuing to develop that utility bill credit program for our seniors who are over 65 and receiving the utility bill credit.
Oh, that's the one that we talked about, Ed?
Yes. One per session. Okay. All right, so if it's okay with you all, let's tackle the first bullet on any projects on that list from band seven or eight. The council, maybe let's start with, is there anything you want to eliminate? Okay. Are there any projects that are a priority that you would like to see us tackle first?
Just on this list?
On, for those four items that are identified in band seven and eight.
Kevin?
No, I was just adding, so, Michael, so this, this allocation is roughly $3 million, which is replacing those two projects that were pulled out. So it instantly moved those up. My only thought would be that, I liked what John spoke to earlier about, I can't remember the, the neighborhood that you were talking about.
Bullock and Howe.
I, I really, if there's a way to, to see, and I know that it's, it would be super early, but I'd like to see what we could, if we could use some of these dollars to help that neighborhood, I would like to see that moved up on prioritization. I think if we're, if we're taking time to try to improve Creekview, I think that's a...
Definitely. Those are from Creekview.
I mean...
So I can, so, excuse me, Tracy. Based on what I understand about the potential cost of Bullock, then y'all don't need to worry about seven and eight. It's about $2 million for that one street, right?
Well, this is one.
Well, I think it's just the one, right?
I think it was, there's two streets.
Is it Bullock and Howe? Okay. Oh, that's water sewer, everything. Okay. So both streets, $2 million. That takes care of seven and eight. It's not, if that's what y'all choose to do, and there's more work for us to do in terms of having that community meeting and figuring it out. So...
So hearing consensus.
I'm, I'm okay with moving that up above eight. The Bullock, I guess, or replacement of eight.
So eliminating both of those projects in band eight?
And that's also, those residents come to consensus, too.
That's why I was saying, at this point, it, that's why I was making the, maybe I shouldn't have said it the way I did it. If Bullock and Howe are the streets that you're talking about, band eight, the citywide LTE network, which we've said is a long-term project anyway, Bullock would replace that, then you have seven and eight.
Seven, maybe the top or eight.
Yeah, we actually, you still have seven and eight, because it's $2 million. So if Bullock is, Bullock and Howe are $2 million, you just took out citywide LTE, and you just replaced it with Bullock. And you take care of seven and eight. That's what I was...
Now, that all, that then eliminates, we would need to make a decision then on the utility billing credit. Because that will take, everything that's on your screen is going to take about everything that's there.
The street value, though.
Yeah.
So in light of everything that you just said, I guess I would propose, because seven, for sure, A, because I could go either way. Seven, though, it feels like that's somewhat shovel-ready. Even, I mean, or getting much closer than the, the other project we're talking about.
Payment replacement would be ready to go if we've got...
It would come faster.
It's not going to happen tomorrow, but...
So from that standpoint, I guess I would say we just go ahead and move that one up and move forward with that. The fact is, we're not eliminating any of the projects that would eventually get done somewhere down the road.
You're just getting a direction on do we, do we do some more work on this?
Yeah.
Because we, that, that's what we're asking for.
I, I guess I would be okay with moving seven on up. What is that, 750?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because that would still leave potentially some money for the utility bill credit and...
So that's 227 on the...
The other business.
Right.
A phase two, if needed, or something. I guess the way I think about it, compartmentalizing. So I would be in favor of seven. That's, that's what I was, that's what all those words meant.
No, I'm, I was listening to you, and I was...
Not understanding?
I was, I was trying to compartmentalize with you on how you got to the seven.
She's trying to find which compartment.
What?
Trying to find the right compartment.
Yeah, exactly. I was trying to figure out how you got to the, how you got to the seven.
Seven, number seven?
Oh, number seven, okay. I thought you were coming to a number. I was like, full amount.
Number seven.
Block seven.
Block seven.
Right. Because remind me of the utility bill credit over 65, is how much?
That is 220. Just shy of 230.
230, testament.
And that's for $100 credit for each one.
Right. Right. Okay. Perhaps I should start with the utility bill credit, because that's just one thing. So is there interest from council in pursuing that project idea?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I was going to say, I'd love to expand, but I think that's what we had agreed on, was starting at the 65 and up, so.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then we have, I've included then Howe and Bullock for two, which then leaves us two. Then I've got 230. And then those two items in number seven.
Right, so it knocks out the teams.
The teams, correct.
Teams, sorry.
Or just lowers that in terms of priority. Those two items then just drop below everything else we just discussed.
And on that one, we said it was, we, something that we dropped. Eventually, we're going to have to get that done. We'll just, well, right now, we'll just include it as part of the budget process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number one tonight?
Right. Yeah.
That was item two.
We just crushed item B.
Oh, we did three, two.
There was a 5% of work hours in the kitchen.
The time is 7:30. We're going to recess from work session and reconvene after the normal city council meeting. So we have about five minutes to get into city council meeting. We'll start at 7:35. So, what do you mean, so what?
What Teresa said was that.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:37 PM and we're going to move into the regular session of the Capel City Council. As a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance or during the public hearings must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list your residence address. Andrea Salka with Allies Interface Group is here to give the invocation and then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Andrea?
Thank you, Wes and the council for inviting the Allies and myself for saying the prayer today. I am Jewish and I belong to a congregation in Dallas, Texas, because just FYI, we don't have a Jewish temple or synagogue in Dallas. But I'm very honored to share this prayer with you. And this is actually a prayer that we say on the Sabbath every week. So it's in our prayer book and so I wanted to share it with you. Our God and God of our ancestors grant to our country the will and wherewithal to fulfill its calling to justice, liberty, and equality. May each of us fulfill our responsibilities of citizenship with care, generosity, and gratitude, ever conscious of the extraordinary blessing of freedom, ever mindful of our duties to one another. Bless those who volunteer to labor on behalf of us all. May they find strength and courage to complete their tasks and fulfill their dreams. May our judges, elected leaders, and all who hold public office exercise their responsibilities with wisdom, fairness, and justice for all. Fill them with love and kindness and bless them that they may walk with the integrity on paths of peace and righteousness. Creator and protector of all, watch over our armed forces and all those entrusted with our safety as they daily put their lives at risk to protect us and our freedoms. Be with them in times of danger. Give them courage to act with honor and dignity as well as insight to do what is right in your eyes. Fill us all with gifts of love and courage that we may create a world that reflects your glory. May we each respond to the charge, for what does I deny demand of you but to act justly, to love kindness and to walk humbly with our God. May the one who brings peace on high bring peace and prosperity to our world and keep us in safety and let us say amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number six is our citizens' appearance and we did not have anybody sign up to speak tonight, so I am going to forego the reading of the text on that one. Item number seven, our, is item seven, eight, and nine are proclamations and give me just a moment to get downstairs. Counsel, for your consideration, would the pickleball group come downstairs? Nancy, you can control them. Oh, we see who the real boss down here is. Counsel, for your consideration, whereas pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports with more than 4.2 million participants in the United States and whereas pickleball programs have become an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Capel, and whereas pickleball programs aid in building healthy, active communities by providing an intergenerational, low-impact competitive sport that is easy to learn, inexpensive to play, and improves and promotes physical, mental, and emotional health along with camaraderie, teamwork, kindness, and enjoyment for individuals and the community as a whole, and whereas because pickleball, volunteers and enthusiasts have shared their joy of pickleball, it has grown the program at Wagon Wheel Tennis and Pickleball Center upwards of 150% this past year. There are over 400 people who are now part of the open play program with an average of 70 to 75 people playing per session on 12 courts. Whereas the U.S. Pickleball Association has designated April as National Pickleball Month, and whereas the city of Capel recognizes the benefits derived from the sport of pickleball there, now, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of April as National Pickleball Month. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed as 26th day of April 2022. Count, counsel, Mayor Pro Tim Brianna Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. While I've never played pickleball, but I'm always willing to learn, it sounds amazing. I move to approve a proclamation celebrating the month of May as Pickleball Month and authorizing the mayor to sign.
I have several seconds, but Councilmember Carroll was next. All in favor?
Long Hinojosa Smith, Carol Nevilles, John Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I have to reflect the Mayor Pro Tim's comments. I've never played either, but it wouldn't be hard to talk me into it. Nancy, you look like you just have to say something.
Well, the first thing I want to say is that those numbers on the proclamation, I gave them quite a while ago, many months ago, so I think those numbers have really increased since then. But thank you guys all for coming tonight and thank you for approving our proclamation, counsel and mayor. I want to tell you a little story and then I want to introduce you to some people. When I first heard about pickleball, I was sitting up in the seat at number five and we were hearing about the U.S. Open was coming, the Texas U.S. Open was coming to Capel. And I always pictured pickleball as a, at the senior center, on the hardwood floors in the recreational room. And little did I know that when I left, counsel, I found pickleball and every single person up here I did not know a year ago, and now I consider you guys all my friends. So I'm a USA Ambassador, I'm one of two here in the city of Capel, and Rick is the other one. But what I want to do is I want to, I haven't been at it as long as a lot of these people have, but I did want to bring recognition to the sport. So I'd like to hand the mic over to Barb and then I would like to have Eric say a few things, but Barb is our top volunteer here and, go ahead, Barb.
Well, the biggest deal is that when COVID started, we all, the 20 of us that were playing pickleball had to move outdoors and we've grown it exponentially, as you well know. There's almost 500 people that are on our email list for open play and Eric is the one who gets a lot of credit for putting up with us because we appreciate the flexibility. I mean, we have all ages playing and it's, what's really amazing is how many people supposedly are at work when they're playing pickleball in the middle of the day. But, but we, but it's kind of like we have a bunch of new best friends and we appreciate the city's support and certainly Wagon Wheel's support. And they did, you all did rename Wagon Wheel to Tennis and Pickleball Center, so.
Thank you, council. And this is Eric Clay. He's the facilities manager over at the Wagon Wheel Tennis and Pickleball Center. So go ahead, Eric, tell us how it's grown in the last, you know.
You got it.
All right.
First of all, thank you for having us here. I feel like you guys are my friends as well. For a while, we were just a tennis center and now we've got a great new group, a great new culture of pickleball folks. The, in the proclamation, we talk about our open play program, three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. You're all welcome to come on out. The program has doubled. This time, last year, physical year, we were just humming along, thought we were doing great. We've had over 2,500 people so far in this calendar year. We are going to smash our number from the previous year with our pickleball friends, the support that we're getting from our pickleball friends of pickleball in Capel, and our advisory team is just awesome. It's absolutely a win-win.
That's it. Just thank you again. And Kevin, Councilmember Nevilles has come out and played with us before. Unfortunately, it was a little damp and rainy that day, so we invite you back out and we invite any of you guys to come back out. We'd be happy to teach you the game. Just give us a holler. You know my number. So, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, hang on. Councilmember John, did you have something to say?
Yeah.
Councilmember Neville?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, it was an absolute pleasure to come out and play and then I realized, you know, I'm, I'm a relatively athletic person. I can go out and do stuff and I went out, I was like, hey, this, this game is pretty easy, till I realized that my opponents weren't trying because I was new. And then I started playing some games where some people were actually trying and I was quickly humbled and I will say that it's absolute blast. It's so much fun and we are all so excited about the growth of this sport and this program in our community. So thank you guys for being, all of you for being ambassadors for this in our community. You guys make us look good, so thank you very much.
Who wants the?
Put your pedals up. Put your pedals up. Ready? One. One, two, three. Hold on just a second. One, two, three. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Wes.
Could I have members of the Asian Pacific community come forward, please? Whereas across the nation, Asian American and Pacific American Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the diverse culture, history, contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders for their tremendous accomplishments, influence in the community. And whereas throughout the history of our nation, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have helped shape America's character as a vital, vibrant, and dynamic people. And whereas the national character of the United States has been strengthened and enhanced by citizens who maintain and honor cultural values and customs brought from other lands. And whereas to honor the accomplishments and contributions of Asian Pacific Americans to our nation, in 1992, Congress approved Public Law 102-450 designating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas the city of Capel is honored that many Asian Pacific Americans have chosen Capel as their home or place of business and welcomes the diversity that their choices provide for all sectors of our residential and business community. Whereas Capel's population consists of 24.8% Asian residents, some who have lived in Capel for an extended time and some of whom are new immigrants and refugees. They contribute their talent, skills, and vitality to the socioeconomic growth and cultural prosperity of our region. And whereas the city of Capel has a deep commitment to promote racial equality, inclusion, and diversity in all aspects of city government, now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do proclaim the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Capel to be affixed as 26th day of April 2022. Counsel, for your considerations. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number eight.
Second by Councilmember Nevilles. All in favor?
Long Hinojosa Smith, Carol Nevilles, John Matthew Hill.
Oh, I'm glad.
All in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Councilmember John, I'm glad to see that you voted for that one, so congratulations very much. And I must say that, you know, we've been involved with many events. In fact, last weekend was a tremendous event at the U.S. Chinese Gala and there was over 1,000 people at the event and you and I were in attendance and it was a fantastic event. So I'm sure you would like to have a few words?
Mayor, council, thank you so much for the proclamation and I can guarantee all of you that I'm not the only Asian living here. We will do better next time to get the Asian community to come out and accept the proclamation, but I know from my heart as well as all the Asian community, Asian Americans that are living not only in Capel but throughout the metroplex sincerely do appreciate the recognition and the proclamation, so thank you again.
Item number nine is a proclamation with the South Asian American Heritage Month. Can I have any members of that community, please, come forward? Councilmember John, can I get you to represent the group, please? And Councilmember Bijou? Counsel, for your consideration, whereas May 5, 1838, is the earliest recorded arrival of immigrants from South Asia, and whereas South Asian Heritage Month is a time to honor the rich cultural heritage and accomplishments of the people of the South Asian heritage and pay tribute to them and the organizations that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of our community. And whereas South Asian Heritage Month provides us with an opportunity to learn about the immigrants of South Asia's experiences and the vital role that they have played throughout our history. And whereas the national character of the United States has been strengthened and enhanced by citizens who maintain and honor cultural values and customs that were brought from other lands. Americans of South Asian ancestry have long been part of that tradition by enriching the fabric of our society with entrepreneurship, excellence in education, and dedication to community services. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of May as South Asian American Heritage Month. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of Capel to be affixed as 26th day of April 2022. Counsel? Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve of item number nine, proclaiming the month of May as South Asian American Heritage Month and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Hinojosa Smith. All in favor? All in favor?
Longina Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill. All in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And Bijou, it's nice to have you down here, so thank you very much. I'll let you have the proclamation, and I'm sure you have a few words to say as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's glad to be part of this, South Asian American Heritage Month. We, as a community, is very strong because of our diversity we have in our community. By 2040, we are projected to be about 40-plus percentage of the population will be from Southeast, Southeast Asia, or descendants from Southeast Asia. Like I said, we are a very strong community because of the diversity that we have in our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through our budget, through past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, is there any consent agenda item that you wish to have removed or considered Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Neville.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A through I.
Councilmember Carol, second. All in favor?
Longina Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill. All in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. This is to receive comment concerning the city of Capel's guidelines, criteria, and procedures for tax abatement agreements effective 2022 and through 2024. Any, let's see, we did not have anybody sign up to speak for the public hearing, so I'm going to waive the reading of that and let Ms. Hurley get into the content.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I am here to discuss our tax abatement policy this evening. This item is routine in nature but is a requirement of Chapter 312 of the Tax Code. So Chapter 312 of the Tax Code contains the statutes that govern tax abatements in the state of Texas. Each taxing unit that wants to participate in tax abatements must adopt a resolution that indicates the intent to participate in tax abatement agreements. That same taxing unit must also adopt tax abatement guidelines and criteria by which tax abatement requests will be evaluated. The guidelines and criteria can be general to provide flexibility, or they can provide, or they can be specific to limit the number of requests that an entity receives. These guidelines and criteria are effective for two years and must be amended and/or re-adopted. So before the guidelines and criteria can be adopted, a public hearing must be held to allow for public comment. And tonight, we're holding that public hearing, and you have before you the resolution that adopts the guidelines and criteria for Capel. The current guidelines and criteria have not been amended over the past nine years because they were written in a manner that allowed flexibility for tax abatements as our vacant land in Capel became less abundant. And so, we still had interest in Capel from the business community. However, we did not have as many opportunities for new construction. Therefore, the guidelines and criteria were written to allow for new construction, new businesses without new construction, and the expansion or modernization of existing facilities and structures. The guidelines and criteria allow for each incentive request, our current guidelines and criteria request, I'm sorry, incentive request, to be heard on a case-by-case basis, and the decisions for an incentive is based on the project's fiscal impact, community impact, and employment impact to the city of Capel. So holding this public hearing and adopting the guidelines and criteria tonight does not obligate the city to approve any tax abatement agreements. These are just the requirements if a taxing entity wants to be able to offer tax abatement agreements. And each tax abatement agreement will still continue to be brought forward to you all for consideration on a case-by-case basis, and we will have your input before an offer will be made. So if City Council does desire, we will bring the abatement policy back for discussion and consideration after we have more clarity on outcomes and recommendations from the Forward Task Force and the Smart Cities Board. But until then, this item is routine in nature and staff recommends to re-adopt the guidelines and criteria that we currently have. And again, they provide us the greatest amount of flexibility. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hurley, so we are just re-adopting what's already in place, and does it actually have an expiry? I know you mentioned two years, but.
It does not have an expiration date, but yes, we need to.
But we have to re-adopt.
The guidelines state to re-adopt them every.
Or change them.
Or amend them every two years.
Okay, so we would take another look at this in two years.
Correct. And again, we can visit those again as we have more clarity from the different boards and just different direction we want to go. But for right now, since we don't have that clarity, we recommend just sticking with what we have.
Okay.
Seeing no other comments, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Neves. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we didn't have a.
You did. You didn't say we didn't.
I did. I did at the, I'm sorry, we're having a bit of a confusion up here. We did say, state that at the beginning of the, the reading. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve agenda item 11.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Our Mayor Protem Hinojosa Smith. All in favor?
Longina Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill. All in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so is that 11 and 12 that is the resolution that goes with that?
Oh, we did not do 12, so we are going to have to do that one separately.
Sure, that's fine.
Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I approve, I move that we approve agenda item 12.
Thank you. Council, our Mayor Protem Hinojosa Smith. All in favor?
Longina Hosa Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill. All in favor, none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is a city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few things to report. First of all, if you've noticed, the intersection improvement projects continuing, work with Encore, they finally placed a new concrete pole there at Bethel School, so that'll help get that project moving forward. Also, they've started the work at Highway 121, Sam Rayburn, and Denton Tap, if you noticed that work as well. As far as Plantation, if you haven't driven down Plantation, please do. So they've done a great job getting that project nearly finished. The landscaping, irrigation, and final cleanup is going on at the present time. As far as Beltline is concerned, so there are our businesses on Beltline, so we need to remember our businesses on Beltline and continue to frequent those businesses on South Beltline. I traveled today, just to do a little checkup, and I went through about 11:30, and from southwestern to 6:35, it only took me about six minutes. And coming back at 1 o'clock, it was basically about six minutes. But interestingly enough, Kent's got a pretty cool report that's going to come out pretty soon about, that shows the peak time by hour during the course of the, of the day, so you'll be able to see that. So that's a really cool deal. What he said is, in general, there was about a 10,000 vehicle per day reduction in traffic and volume before construction to during construction. We've seen an increase in average travel time, you know, in terms of, like I just talked about in terms of minutes. And the last thing I want to report on is, this past Thursday, I was in Austin for the House Ways and Means Committee hearing on destination versus origination. Chairman Meyer is in charge of that, and basically, he's the individual who introduced the bill last session that would switch sales tax sourcing in Texas from origination to destination. During the course of the hearing, the Comptroller's Office did the presentation first, that they talked about Rule 3.334 and its implementation. They recognized that we have the lawsuit in place. It was interesting, Chairman Meyer wanted to know why the injunction was granted and what the irreparable harm was. He was talking about a TRO, a Temporary Restraining Order, where we were talking about an injunction. So I think it's just the legalese, the distinction about what's required for that. So that was explained to him. The, the next hearing, well, they probably aren't going to have another hearing on this particular subject, so we'll probably see the report sometime in November or December, fully anticipating that the, the committee will be recommending making the change because that's what the chairman wanted and what was presented last time. Ellie was there, representing the Chamber of Commerce, and we had several cities, there were several independent business folks who came up and spoke about the burden of destination. Just interesting little stat, there are a little over 800-plus thousand, call them businesses, small businesses, if you will, in the state of Texas, and of those, 600,000 report single source, meaning they just report one on their sales tax filing. Kevin would know this. If this change were to go into place, that 600,000 are the impacted businesses that then would have up to 1,700 possible destinations that they would have to report to. And, and so that message was stated over and over again to the committee. If you've ever been to a committee hearing, or if you want to watch a committee meeting hearing, I don't know why you do that, but if you do want to watch a committee meeting hearing, it's a fascinating process because, this is Mike's commentary, it's as if they don't care. They're getting up and they're leaving, they're messing with their phone, they're, I mean, they're just completely non-engaged with the entire process. And it's, could be disheartening if that wasn't our process of government, but that's the way it's set up. And so there were written comments, I, I got y'all copies of what the mayor submitted, and the chamber submitted some things, and we're continuing to work on that. Related to the lawsuit, just as an update, still on target for the September, the last week of September is when our hearing is currently scheduled to be had. If you recall during the discussion, there was some mention about the deposition that was getting ready to be taken. That deposition was actually taken by, of the Comptroller's Office, and this was the person that was supposed to be the expert on the implementation of 334. And the answers to the questions were, I don't know, I'm not aware, or no, we didn't do that research. So that's how the deposition went for that particular individual who's supposed to be the expert. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Sounds like you had a fun time. Item number 14, Mayor and Council reports. Town Center is a polling location for early voting, which started yesterday and ends on Tuesday, May 3, for the May 7 election. Award-winning vocalist Prakash will be performing at the Capel Arts Center on April 29. Tickets are available for purchase online. And the Okey Doke Brothers will also be performing at the Arts Center on April 30. This Grammy award-winning band record and perform family music with the goal to inspire children and their parents to get outside and experience nature. The Capel Farmers Market is the best unique small market in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. Vendors feature grass-fed meats and poultry, organic eggs, artisan breads, honey, and other specialty products. Invite you to come out to the Farmers Market, find local healthy food, develop a relationship with those providing your food, meet up with friends and neighbors, and be a part of the local movement at the square at Old Town. Next session is April 30, the Saturday from 8 to noon. The Biodiversity Education Center will be hosting Earth Fest on April 30, Saturday from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. And lastly, this past Saturday, we, we conducted Neighbors Helping Neighbors, which is the introductory program for volunteers from the city to help, help their neighbors. And in fact, we had 120 volunteers signed up, and we addressed and helped 34 different households. This was the first program of its, here in Capel, and the plan is to, to introduce it and let the high school eventually use it as a student-led activity. So this was a tremendous outcome from the, from the first session, and we look to reproducing it next year as well. Photos are floating all over Facebook. It was a truly remarkable time to be there. Okay, item number 15, City Council reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item number A is a report on the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and Lewisville ISD from Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start off with Carrollton Farmers Branch. And CFB ISD was selected as a finalist, semifinalist for the HEB Excellence in Education Award. Out of 1,500 applications, the district advanced to the top 25 districts across the state. CFB ISD is hiring. The district recently hosted several job fairs and is recruiting for teacher and auxiliary positions. And if you're interested, go to their website, and you can get more information there. Online enrollment for students opened on April 1 and will continue through the summer. CFB has three Board of Trustees seats open, and election is, election day is Saturday, May 6, so get out and support your favorite candidate. The district will honor more than 30 exemplary teachers at the Annual Teacher of the Year Event on May 17. The elementary and secondary teacher of the year will be announced. These winners will then move on to compete at the Region 10 level. And believe it or not, it's getting to be that time of the year. Graduation ceremonies for the senior class of 2022 are scheduled for May 28 at the University of North Texas. And let's move on to Lewisville. LISD is proud to announce that they have 56 national merit finalists this year. Kudos to all 56 students who made this monumental achievement. Pre-K enrollment week kicked off this Monday, April 11. Visit lisd.net backslash pre-k for more details. I want to give Rock Brook Elementary Special Education teacher Peggy Hill and Hebron High School's Director of Bands Andrew Sealy big congratulations. They were named 2022 Teachers of the Year. You can visit lisd.net backslash E O Y for a complete list of award winners. And lastly, LISD named Paige Maloney as the district's new CFO. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Item B is a report on the Capel ISD. Councilmember Kevin Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, we're going to start off with some CISD brags. Capel Student Media wins the fifth, its fifth National Scholastic Press Association Online Pacemaker Award, that's a mouthful, which is considered the Pulitzer Prize of student journalism. Only three high schools in Texas and 20 high schools in the U.S. received this distinction, so congratulations. Let's see, Capel ISD High School choirs returned to in-person UIL concert and sight-reading evaluations for the first time since the spring of 2019. All four performing ensembles received the highest possible rating, which is ones, from all six judges, resulting in the distinction of sweepstakes for each choir ensemble. Capel ISD Education Foundation honored our top 5% students and their chosen teachers at a banquet last week. We are so proud of these students, many of whom are advancing to elite and Ivy League schools after graduating from Capel ISD. And congratulations to our district elementary teacher of the year Natalie Kucha from Pinkerton Elementary, and secondary teacher of the year from New Tech High at Capel, Anthony Hufford. A couple of other things going on. We are in the middle of a school board election. Election Day is going to be Saturday, May 5. Early voting for that election is on right now. Just so everyone knows, Place 1, Lee Walker is running unopposed. Place 2, Manesh Seti is running unopposed. And Place 3 is a contested race with Anthony Hill and Carol Lacy McGuire vying for Place 3. Enrollment, it's enrollment season at Capel ISD, its kindergarten enrollment is now underway, and the kindergarten roundup, roundup is set for May 5. Capel ISD is actually going through a visioning process right now. Our visioning community and staff feedback forums were a success with more than 400 people. hundred individuals providing feedback on the visioning process. Results of the feedback was shared at CISD Board of Trustees that happened yesterday. And then last thing to report is there is some future bond planning and community involvement for Capel ISD. And Capel ISD is looking ahead for the future. It's been seven years since the voter-approved 2016 bond. Part of the process is a determination of district needs, which are available as part of a board presentation. You can find that online. And then the possible makeup of a bond committee includes CISD parents, students, staff, community members, and businesses, and city leaders. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item C is a report on our Capel seniors by Councilmember John John.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we have some seniors here, senior senior center members here, and I appreciate you being out here as well. And there are a number of things that's happening in Senior Center, including bingo that's happening every Friday at ten a.m., and they also had the Arboretum Day Trip, they also had the indoor Easter egg hunt, and they had Senior Center Volunteer Appreciation Lunch. If you, and I also want to thank Councilmember Matthew and Nevels for visiting the Senior Centers. I think you could agree that the seniors really appreciate your visitation and being able to answer some of the questions they had. With that said, tomorrow, April twenty-seventh, is another lunch and meet with seniors, so I invite any one of you, if you are free and able to attend, engage with the seniors, and maybe you could answer some of the questions as well. There are a number of things that's going to be happening in the summer as well. Their breakfast bingo is returning in May, and they'll have Dallas Arboretum Nature Walk in June, and the Colette Travel Presentation in August, and then they'll also have Memory, Master of Memory Sixth Week Program from July sixth through August seventeenth. Just FYI, the additional item for Capel, the Senior Center, the total participation scan at the front desk since January first were four thousand seven hundred sixty-nine, and just for April, there were five hundred fifteen participation scans. And the staff is also working on exploring the meal program with the, called Metroport, and the seniors also had an opportunity to hear firsthand from the foreboard to learn about their research, which was very, I was told that it was very informative, and they're very excited about the village model as well. The pickleball players that you saw, they're all being directed currently to the Wagon Wheel Center. There are still some, they're requesting that if they could have some indoor pickleball, that would be great. And then the additional bingo will be, will return on first Monday, and this is a, at twelve-thirty, and this will be a potluck bingo. Now, some of the Senior Centers that they had requested that we look into or try to address the issue was, one of the things was that they noticed that some of the roadway, the reflectors are disappearing more and more, so they're not very clear as to, you know, the line, the center lines. That was actually mentioned to our Kent, the public director, and he did mention that those are, they're phasing that out and coming up with a new plan so for those seniors who are curious as to why that's not being worked on, they are going to be worked on. And that is all I have, so again, I invite any one of the council members to join me tomorrow at the Senior Centers and engage with the seniors.
Thank you very much. Item number sixteen, or Public Service Announcements Concerning Items of Community Interest With No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. Do we have any public service announcements? Seeing none. We have two items left. One of them is a work session item, and the other one is an executive session item, so we're going to recess from the regular session of the Capel City Council at eight nineteen All right, the time is eight twenty-two, we're going to reconvene into work session. We had five items left on work session, there's only one of them that we actually have to cover tonight. We can defer the other three or four, three, to May, unless somebody just has a burning desire to hear them tonight.
May.
Do you have a burning desire to hear them tonight?
May.
May, okay.
May, I'm sorry.
I thought you said, I thought you said me.
Oh. I have a burning desire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. To tell the.
Thank you. Councilmember Long. I'm back this evening to discuss property tax exemptions. If you recall, at the March twenty-second council work session, I was asked to bring back to council additional information to assist with the exemption discussion. Specifically, I was asked to determine the average assessed value of over sixty-five property versus the averaged assessed value of non-over-sixty-five property. I was also asked to bring back separate scenarios for properties receiving the over-sixty-five exemption versus properties receiving just the standard homestead exemption. It was also determined at that meeting that council would like to explore a strategic plan around exemptions. Now, before I jump into the analysis, I would like to review a few calculations and revisit a couple of pieces of data that was shown at the March twenty-second meeting. I know that council's familiar with the information, however, there may be someone that's seeing this information for the first time, so I would like to take a few minutes to review it because the information is integral to the discussions this evening. So you'll recall the button slide, this shows how someone would calculate their property tax bill. A couple of things to point out is the assessed value is determined by the appraisal district, and the chief appraiser must follow state law to determine the property values, and that's the green button. The city has no control over this button, it's all related to the tax assessor, or the appraisal district. Next is exemptions, which are determined by council, and the topic, and it's the topic of this evening's discussion. These are subtracted from the assessed property values to determine the taxable value of the property. The taxable value then drops down, and it's divided by one hundred, multiplied by the tax rate, and that's how we calculate the tax bill of a property owner. And this should look familiar, this is how we calculate the property tax revenue of the city. Notice that the green button again, both the previous calculation and this calculation start with assessed value, but for this calculation, the assessed value is for all property in the city. Again, the assessed value is established by the appraisal district. The next blue button again represents exemptions, which are again determined by council. Exemptions in this calculation represent total exemptions given on all properties, and as in the previous calculation, we subtract total exemptions from total assessed value to derive the taxable value of all city property, or property in the city. The taxable value of all property in the city is divided again by a hundred because tax rate is per hundred dollars of value, multiplied by the tax rate to obtain the total property tax revenue of the city. The total property tax revenue is used to pay the principal and interest payments on debt that's outstanding, and it's also the amount that's available for operations and maintenance, which is what's available to serve and maintain the community. Again, the CSO effect is going to be really talked about this evening, and this is as appraised values go up, the no new revenue tax rate comes down. As appraised values come down, then the no new revenue tax rate would come up. If both stay unchanged, everything remains equal. And that concept can be carried over to your discussion tonight concerning homestead exemptions. The top, the top CSO shows current exemptions and current tax value would be equal, and that's our starting point, and so then as exemptions are increased, the tax value goes down. As exemptions are decreased, which I know you're not doing this evening, tax values would go up. This was also some data from the previous presentation in March, and I found this slide was interesting because it shows that since 2012, the number of parcels receiving the over-sixty-five exemption has increased by one thousand three hundred and sixty-three parcels, and that that represents a hundred and seventeen percent increase in the number of parcels receiving the home, or the over-sixty-five exemption. This also shows that the over-sixty-five exemption is removing a little over a hundred and ninety million dollars from the total assessed value of property in Capel. This is an increase of almost a hundred and ten million since 2012. This next slide, it shows the parcels receiving the homestead exemption in 2012 totaled about nine thousand six hundred and five, and it grew to nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-four in 2021, and then it went down slightly to nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-one for 2022. This represents about a one-point-three percent growth in the homestead exemption parcels. This slide also shows that the homestead exemptions are removing about two hundred nineteen million dollars from the total assessed value of property in Capel. This is an increase of about seventy-nine million from 2012. So now that I've provided you some historical data and an understanding of how all the pieces interact, I'm going to move to the analysis that was requested, and I'm going to cover a lot of information, but I do have a few slides at the end that's going to summarize everything for you. So this first slide reflects the changes requested by council. The top half, labeled homestead only, shows the taxable value calculation using the average assessed value for a residential property for both fiscal year 2022 and then what's forecasted for fiscal year 2023. The calculation starts with the average assessed value, which was the green button on the previous slides. It's the value before any exemptions. Next is the current five percent homestead exemption, which would have been, which is represented by the blue button on the previous slides, and this exemption is then subtracted from the assessed value to determine the taxable value of the property, which was the light purple button. On the bottom, the bottom half of this slide, that's labeled homestead and over-sixty-five, this shows the average assessed value for property receiving the homestead and over-sixty-five exemption before applying any exemptions. This calculation then subtracts the five percent homestead exemption and then the seventy-five thousand dollar over-sixty-five exemption to determine the taxable value of a property receiving both the homestead and the over-sixty-five exemptions. The average over-sixty-five assessed value is about forty-two thousand dollars less than the average residential assessed value in fiscal year 2022, and it's projected to be about forty-four thousand dollars less in fiscal year 23. So as a reminder, the fiscal year 23 includes an increase in assessed values of about five-point-five-two-one percent. The increase in assessed values is preliminary and will be updated as we see, we receive additional information from the appraisal district, and actual certified values will not be received until July twenty-fifth. So the analysis that you'll see this evening is based on the values that are shown here, specifically the fiscal year 23 forecasted column. This slide shows the annual savings to a property owner who is over, who is over-sixty-five. If the over-sixty-five exemption is increased in five thousand dollar increments, the savings would be twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents for a five thousand dollar increase, which would take the over-sixty-five exemption from seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand. The slide also shows the impact on property owners who receive the homestead-only exemption, so the non-over-sixty-five property owners. As the over-sixty-five exemption is increased, the non-over-sixty-five property owners will see a slight increase. For example, a non-over-sixty-five property owner will see about a three dollar and twenty-two cent increase if they're, in their property bill, if the over-sixty-five exemption increases from seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand. If the over-sixty-five exemption is increased to a hundred thousand, then the over-sixty-five property owner will see a savings of about a hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents versus the non-over-sixty-five property owner will see a sixteen dollar and twenty-two cent increase in their tax bill. So this next slide, the chart on the left shows the reduction in city property tax revenue as a result of each five thousand dollar increase in the over-sixty-five exemption. Moving the over-sixty-five exemption from seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand would reduce the city's property tax revenue by about sixty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. If the over-sixty-five exemption is increased to a hundred thousand, the reduction in property tax revenue would be almost three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Before I cover the chart on the right, it's important that. Before I cover the chart on the right, it's important that everyone understands that the current property tax rate is 58 cents. So all the tax rates you see this evening are less than the 58 cents. And this is because of your decisions to approve the use of the Northlake property, the sale of that property, and to use those proceeds to defuse the bonds related to that property. That decision reduced the tax rate about two pennies. In addition, recall from the seesaw effect that as values go up, the tax rate is reduced. So although this chart shows an upward tax line, the highest point on the line is still about three cents less than the current tax rate. So with that said, the chart on the right shows the impact on the tax rate for each $5,000 increase in the over 65 exemption. Again, recall the seesaw effect as you look at the tax rate chart. Assuming the goal is to maintain an increase in the maintenance and operation portion of the property tax revenue of 3.499%, as exemptions increase, the tax value decreases. So the property tax rate needed to generate the same level of revenue will increase. Again, the increase on the highest point of this graph is still about three pennies less than the current tax rate. This graph shows the impact of each $5,000 increase again. So I was also asked to show the impact of increasing the homestead exemption separately because the over 65 property owners would also benefit from an increase in this exemption. I'm showing the savings for the average over 65 property owner separately from the savings for the average non-over 65 property owner. I did this because we found that the average value from these two groups is different, as you saw on an earlier slide. And it's my understanding that you are particularly interested in the impact of exemptions on the over 65 group. This slide shows that taking the current homestead exemption from 5% to 6% would provide a $22.49 savings to over 65 property owners and a $24.91 savings to non-over 65 property owners. The chart to the right shows that this increase in the homestead exemption would result in a decrease in property tax revenue provided to the city of a little over $299,000. If this exemption is increased from 5% to 10%, the over 65 group would save about $115.22 and the non-over 65 group would save $127.61, while the city's property tax revenues would decline about $1.5 million. This chart shows the impact on the tax rate for each 1% increase in the homestead exemption. Again, all the tax rates on this chart are less than the current 58 cent tax rate. What you're seeing here is also consistent with the seesaw effect. Again, assuming the goal is to maintain an increase in the maintenance and operations property tax revenue of 3.499%, as exemptions increase, the taxable value decreases. So the property tax rate needed to generate the same level of revenue will increase. This is the summary that I promised you because we've covered a lot in the short amount of time. So these three slides bring the two different exemptions together in one place. The top two charts shown on the slide show the impact on both classifications and taxpayers. The top left chart shows the savings for the over 65 property owners of increasing the over 65 exemption and the corresponding impact on the non-over 65 property owners. So one classification of taxpayers receives a savings while the other will see a slight increase. The bottom chart shows the impact of increasing the homestead exemption on both over 65 and non-over 65 property owners. Again, the difference is because this exemption is based on a percentage rather than a flat amount. And we found that the average value of the over 65 property is slightly less than the non-over 65 property owner. These are the two charts again that you saw that I went over, the impact of changes in the over 65 exemption and the impact of changes in the homestead exemption on property tax revenue of the city. The reduction in revenue ranges from the $68,574 in the over 65, when it's increased to $80,000, to as much as $1.5 million reduction if the homestead exemption is increased to 10%. And this slide compares the impact of the tax rate of changing the over 65 exemption level versus changing the homestead exemption. Again, it's important that everyone understands that the current property tax rate is 58 cents. All the taxes shown here are again less than that. When we talk about taxes increasing, I just want to make sure that we understand they're not increasing over what we have now. What you are seeing here is consistent with the seesaw effect, assuming the goal is to maintain the increase in the maintenance and operations property tax revenue at 3.499%. As exemptions increase, taxable value decreases. So the property tax rate needed to generate the same level of revenue will increase. For example, the tax rate needed if the homestead exemption is increased would be greater than that needed if the over 65 exemption is increased. And this is because, as you just saw, an increase in the homestead exemption provides a larger reduction in property tax values. And consistent with the seesaw effect, as values go down, property tax rates go up in order to compensate for that revenue. So I've covered a lot of information concerning the impact of the various changes to exemptions. And now I'd like to provide you with four different strategies to consider. So the strategies are option one, leaves exemptions at the current level. You've already taken an action that provides property tax relief to all taxpayers. You approved using the proceeds from the sale of the Northlake property to defuse debt. Since bonds are not issued, are not going to be issued in the current fiscal year, then the debt portion of the tax rate that's used to pay the principal and interest on outstanding debt must be reduced as it can only be set at the rate necessary to generate the amount needed to make those principal and interest payments. So it will go down from the current debt rate of .107789. If we use fiscal year 22's total taxable value to determine the debt portion of the tax rate, it would go down to about eight and a half cents. This is about a two cent reduction. However, remember the seesaw effect. As values go up, the tax rate will come down. So therefore, if we're expecting a 5.521% increase in values and no change to exemptions, the debt portion of the tax rate would drop to about .08115, which is a little over two and a half cent reduction in the tax rate. The second option is to recognize the difference in benefit created by an exemption based on a percent versus a static dollar value. For this option, the goal of this option is to increase the over 65 exemption by an amount that would result in the percent of growth for the over 65 property equally the percent of growth for a non-over 65 property. And this is because the over 65 exemption is static and it's not a percentage like the homestead. So the over 65 as a percent of values will actually decrease as property values increase. Whereas the 5% is maintained because it's a percentage of the value. So the over 65 taxable value increase increases at a higher percentage than the non-over 65 property. So based on the property values increasing by about 5.521%, the increase in the over 65 exemption would need to be $5,000 or a total over 65 exemption of $80,000. Option number three is another strategy. And that would be simply to have a targeted exemption that is based on a percent of taxable value of an over 65 property. For example, the target could be that the city provide an over 65 exemption that is equal to 26% of the average over 65 taxable value after the homestead exemption is applied. So based on that description, the over 65 exemption would need to increase to $100,000 for fiscal year 23. And I'll show you that later, as was shown in a previous chart, sorry. And then the final option is based on a request received during the March 22nd meeting. And at that meeting, we were asked to look at increasing the homestead exemption by the growth in the taxable value. So the over 65 exemption would need to increase by $20,000 to $95,000 in order for the taxable value of the over 65 property to remain flat. So this slide summarizes the impact of each of the options. And all of this information, with the exception of option one, comes from the data that you've seen a few minutes ago. So option one is just showing you the tax rate that we're projecting if no changes to the exemptions are made and the effect on the property tax revenue. And then if you recall, option two would require the $5,000 increase. So that's from the slide, the $27.15. You recall the $68,574 reduction in revenue. Option three is the $100,000. Yes, the $100,000 and the impact of increasing exemptions to $100,000. And then option four is if you're trying to maintain a flat taxable value from year to year and what it would need to be between the two years. And so this evening, the next steps would be to provide direction concerning the exemptions. The direction is one of the options presented tonight, no matter which option, except for option one. We would need options two, three, or four is the direction that we would need to have a resolution approved at the main council meeting. No matter which direction or option is selected, we would want to develop a policy around the strategy that's selected. So maybe you can select a strategy and we'll develop an annual review and financial considerations, put all of that into a policy for you. So with that, I'm sure you have lots of questions.
I've got one.
Okay.
With property values increasing at greater than 10%, I was assuming that our property values were going to go up to the cap limit of 10% from the appraisal district. How is yours showing at 5.15 or 5.25?
That's what we were preliminarily given by the appraisal district when we met with them. And so that's what I'm using right now because I don't really have anything else from them to show.
Plus you have the addition of commercial property.
Yeah.
That's true.
It's a blend in, it's not just the residential.
My appraisal went up more than 5%.
A lot, right? Your net.
Mine's 10.
Mine was right at 10.
Yeah, mine too.
Dawn? Can you go back one slide? Yes, this slide right here. I'm not following the last line because those numbers don't jog for me. So property tax revenue, so the first column is negative half a million.
So that one you didn't see in the presentation and so.
I guess, but what I'm missing is the second one doesn't look like it fits with these others. So how does that number even derive? Because I assumed that was.
So that is if you raise the over 65 to $80,000, it's the $68,574 is the property tax decrease in property tax revenue.
Okay. And you said the first one was not actually calculated anywhere?
No, with the property tax revenue, that's looking at the difference between what we paid for principal and interest this year plus minus what our principal and interest payments will be for next year. And then subtracting from that, it's about 1.4 million is what the 3.499% increase would be in the MNO property tax revenue. So if we increase our maintenance and operations revenue by 3.499, that's about 1.4 million. And then we're removing the difference, the previous debt.
So is this telling me the negative 68,000? That's not from today's tax rate though. Is it from this option of doing nothing? I guess I'm missing because it's, the tax rate is going from 58 cents to 54.3 would be a lot more than 68. So I guess I'm, because that's what this is showing, right? The first column is showing the savings, well, the net savings.
Well, the first column is showing the net savings. So your debt, the amount needed for principal and interest is going from 9.4 to 7.5. So it's about a $1.9 million difference. And then the maintenance and operations, so that's down. Your principal and interest is going down. Your maintenance and operations is going to go up about 1.4.
Right.
So you're going down 1.9 and coming up 1.4.
Okay.
So you're actually going down.
Half a million.
Half a million.
Okay, so why is that not the case on option two? Because those two things you just said are also happening in option two. Debt services going down and MNO is increasing a million or whatever.
Because you're removing, let's go back. You are removing the property tax revenue. So it's $5,000 times the number of 2,500 and some properties is basically that number.
Well, maybe it's not even.
Dawn, are you asking if those two numbers are cumulative because you're going to have.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, and the first number is based, I just based it on what the new debt would be based on the .422 tax rate, which is based on a 5.521 increase. And so that's just simply looking at the difference between the property tax revenue at a flat tax rate doing nothing and the difference in the bonds payments and then what we're going to increase. And that's just the difference between doing nothing and taking the tax rate to 5.5422.
And that makes sense. I guess I would have thought that this one would be, I guess I could say that's 68,000 less than that number. So anyway, I'm sure it's probably maybe not worth getting. The numbers just weren't all driving why that one would be, I mean, the, why that one would be different. Because what you just mentioned, the debt going down and MNO still going up.
Going up a little bit.
Three and a half percent, right? Those are still going to happen even in.
And that's calculated in all of the scenarios. But because those are going down, it's allowing you to eat up some of what the difference is. Because the taxes, everything is based on those, it's based on the debt service going down, the MNO going up slightly and then increasing the exemption. So it's pulling out about $12 million, I believe, in total value. And then you multiply that by the tax rate.
And option two is just $5,000 increase in senior homestead, right? The senior exemption, senior exemption, it's only going to $80,000, right?
Right, because, so what happens is for the over 65, because so their value is going to be lower no matter what because they're getting the 5% and they're getting the over 65. But their change from year to year is actually more than just the increase in value because their $75,000 is static versus a percentage. And so actually, when I looked at this, the actual increase that they would see if you leave it at $75,000, their bill would go up about 7%. Whereas if you just add $5,000 to it, it brings their bill down to about 5.23 compared to the 5.5.
Go back to like your first graph that showed a savings to the senior population.
I think, I'm going to show you this.
Okay.
This will help you. So if you just look at the bottom, the bottom box, it's showing, it's an analysis of the over 65 property. So it's showing that the average assessed value is for fiscal year 23 is $412,000. Back out the 5% and it takes it down to $391,000. The difference between fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23 is 5.521, just like above for the homestead only. And that's because those are based on a percentage, right? So it's going to go with it. However, with the $75,000, in 2022, that $75,000 represents 20.2% of $371,000. 371,000, where in 2023, it only represents 19% of the 391, the new value. And so, in effect, what's happening is the over 65 is now seeing a 7% increase in their value. Even though their value is lower, so their taxes will be lower, they're still experiencing a higher increase because of the static number, that's that dollar amount being a flat dollar amount rather than a percentage.
Okay. And one of your other statements was also that it was going to be to keep on average the senior population flat as far as assessed value is going to be like it needed to go to 95,000. Is that was that right? An increase of 20,000?
Yes.
Is that, am I remembering right? Did I hear right?
Yes. So, it is that one right there.
Is that option four?
That's option four.
Okay.
So, my question is because I don't know like policy, is there a reason why the the senior exemption is a flat rate versus like I don't know if that was a specific reason or is that just customary to cities or is that just something that's laying on versus it being a percentage like home, homestead exemption?
I think it's statute that it's raised in $5,000 increments.
Okay. I was just.
I can verify for you.
Okay.
He was a flat amount of the statute.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Other questions?
Yeah, thanks, man. Can we get the decks to study this at home? Second, can you go back to the total household?
Are you wanting this one or this one?
Yes, yeah, so go one more slide up here. So, 9,731 plus 2,526 for over 65 disabled and vets is the total.
Of residential properties.
Yeah. Yes or no?
Uh huh.
Okay.
So, this is not including the over 65?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the total number is 12,720. That's what I had. That's why I'm asking this question.
And then you have commercial and that's about matches with our waters, our water.
Right. Commercial, we have 2,849. That's the number. Okay. Now, one more slide back.
So, the over 65?
Yeah, so the I want to know the average value of that 65.
And and that's, whoops. There you go.
Right. So, I thought it was going to go down.
It did go down.
Yeah, so no, the in FY '21 tax rule, average taxable value for all houses was 411, 4,011,167. But this one is showing 432. Is that the same slide you had last, last, last time? Okay. So, you're saying based on that, average value is 390?
And so, I want to clarify one thing for you. You said fiscal year 21 and that's because you're looking at tax year 21?
Right.
But it's our fiscal year 22.
Okay.
Okay, because it's it's tax year January 1st of 2021, but it's taxes that are levied for October 1st of our fiscal year 21, 22. And that's why it's 400, that's why you're seeing the 411 matches what you're showing, seeing in the tax rate.
Right, yeah. I'm reading from the budget book that you provided to us. It says 411,167. So, if it's 411,167, the average value for 65 for FY '23 is higher. So, the seniors having higher value.
No, you need to look at the bottom part where it says.
Be consistent on which boxes you're looking at and comparing to.
Yeah, after the deduction, the assessed value for 65 or higher.
I'm just making sure. 411,167 is the average taxable value after exemptions in FY 2022. And FY 2023 projected is 316,746. Average assessed value for over 65 at 412,364 is before exemptions. 411,167 is after exemptions. Your statement was 412 is higher than 411. That's a true statement, but it's two different values. One is the average taxable value after exemptions for an average home. The other is average assessed value before exemptions. So, if you want to compare year to year, FY 2022, the average taxable value over 65 after exemptions is 296. In 2023, it is 316,746.
Okay, yeah, okay, I understand. So, just for the simplicity, the assessed value, average value for all homes in FY 2022 is 432. So, you didn't have this breakdown last time?
I didn't, I didn't. I was requested.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. So, my question is combined 65 plus below 65, average value for FY 22 was what?
432,390. Well, after, after tax, the average taxable value, I think you read it in the budget, was 411,167 for all.
Exactly, that's my point, yeah. That is what the number was for combined.
For all residential or residential?
It's all residential.
Right, that's the number was.
Right, but so now what point were you trying to make about the comparison?
So, now FY 2023, if you look at the box on the right side, right? Forecast FY 2023.
Yes.
The forecasted now. Average assessed value for 65 on the right column is 412.
Before exemptions.
Before exemption.
Correct.
Yes. I'm not talking about exemption, I'm trying to see the value for the seniors sitting, the assessed value for seniors.
But your 430, but your 433 is after exemptions on the top for the average for all residential property. I'm trying to, yeah, I don't know what point you're trying to get to. I'm trying to use and the right numbers.
Yes, yes. What I'm trying to say, I'm looking at numbers first. I need to study this. That's what I was, I was asking this. 411 be established from last year combined average, right? So, that's what. Now, we have a breakdown for 65, which was if you take it this year is 390.
Correct.
Before.
Next year, before, yeah, before the exemption. Next year is going to be or this coming year is going to be 412.
Correct.
Assessed value.
For over 65.
Over 65.
Correct.
Right.
I was going, I was thinking it's going to be much less.
I understand.
That's what I'm trying to say to you.
Well.
But that is not the case, yeah.
Were you expecting the 390 to be much less or the 412?
Yes, 390 and totally both.
Yeah, the starting point was higher than what you thought.
Exactly.
Okay, that was the statement that was.
I'm not arguing with you. So, the values, the seniors are living here, assessed value is much higher than I thought.
But their taxable value is 296,000.
I understand.
That's what they're.
Yeah, because we are providing them exceptions.
Yes.
Right? That's why they had values going down.
Yeah.
Were you just saying in general, you thought that the average home was lower value?
Senior's value might be less.
They had maybe smaller homes that were.
Okay. All right. That is not the case.
Okay, gotcha.
That's, okay. Yeah. So, the people who are living on 65 or above, getting the discount, are living, living in a higher value houses. Gotcha, okay. Now, thank you in this down.
Is it because of appraisal one up or?
Well, he said 10% went up on his property.
But that's because.
But it was a year.
But that's because it's.
Yeah, but the bad is just kind of.
Right. The state doesn't let your appraisal go up more than 10% a year.
Right. And and we are capping, the school is capping the tax rate for seniors at the, at the age of 65 appraisal, correct?
I don't know what they're doing.
Okay.
For sure.
I know school and the county is doing that. So, I don't know if it's appraisal value at 65 or is what amount are they camping at?
And I do not know.
Yeah, I know we don't do.
Right.
That's because the state picks.
That's regulated by the state.
The state picks up the additional dollars.
Right, yeah, I don't know what number is, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't.
That's what's on the ballot too.
To increase the home.
For 25,000 to 40,000.
For the school.
For schools.
Don? Is is this safe to sort of, if I'm just thinking through this, if we don't do anything, just leave everything like this? On average, everyone's city tax bill would only be going up three and a half percent. Is that a fair? And it has to do with mixing in this commercial property, probably doesn't it?
Right. Property tax revenue on the MNO can only go up 3.49.
But that, but you got commercial values that are not going up as fast as residential.
I don't know what they're, I mean.
It's not. It must be. I mean, 10% is extremely low for an increase. It's more like 20 to 40. Mine's 61.
That was all the appraisal office could increase it.
Oh, yeah, even capital, the appraisal value.
Right. I'm very familiar with one particular property and it's gone up close to 30% in the last 18 months.
Mine went up 61 this year.
So, do, one more question for you, Ken. We have 2,849 commercial buildings. Is it possible to find out the value from last year, the assessed value from last year to this year? So, that know, we know the percentage that is going up.
We show you that during the budget process every time. We break it out and show you what the residential was for the previous year and what it is for the current. And we do that for commercial and business personal property. So, you can see the individual increases in each of those classifications. So, we do provide that to you. I wouldn't be able to, we don't know the assessed values yet. We get that in July. They'll put some preliminary values out in May.
But that's before all the protests.
That's before all the protests, so you don't rely on those.
Because they have to, what, May 15th to file the protest?
You know, I was looking for more for the last year settled one, FY '21 or FY '22, I should say.
As far as what the?
The commercial property value increase from FY '21. So, we know what percentage. Do you know?
I do not know.
Okay.
You could go look and see what 20 to 21 did in last year's budget, but.
I'm trying to look for that breakdown. That's what I was looking.
It would be, it would be really risky to try to guess what 22 is going to be.
I don't think it's in the budget. I know it's in the.
For residential, yes, but for the commercial, they have always just fight it.
To my knowledge, it's not.
Yeah, it, that breakdown isn't.
Don? I don't know where the discussion will all go. I think I'm, my preference is I'm still leaning toward the over 65 exemption taken and probably actually to $100,000 and partially because it will actually cover their increase. It's actually goes a little bit more than that, right? You said 20 or 21,000 is actually what it would, to keep them neutral in that way is on the.
Yeah, I'm going to.
It was the last two numbers on here.
To keep them neutral, you would take it up to 95,000.
Right. So, in spirit of that one doesn't move, it is static and it probably has been like that for years and years and years at 75 is, I don't actually know how long it's been at 75. It's been at 75 for a long time, right? So, this is an adjustment of the, everyone's tax rate is coming down this year and it's, you saw, you showed the impact of the non-senior population, right? Theirs was going to increase net $13 or something like that. Was that one of those first grinds?
It was to 16.
It was 16, but we did the 100, right?
It went to 100, yeah, which is what I would propose.
Yeah, 16, 22.
So, 95 was actually less than 14.
13 bucks. In the spirit of, you know, we've talked about supporting the, the senior population and and the city, adjusting that static number, I think is probably where I'm a little bit in my head's leaning, at least at the moment. So, I know some people would ask for some additional information, but that's where I'm leaning.
Hi, were you landing on 95 or 100?
100.
Yeah, I'm with Don on this. I just raising that static number up to 100, I like that. I mean, it's a, I just, you know, the potential savings right here, I don't, it just, I like that number better. It covers them, like you said, from that that increase we'll see. And I think that we, it goes, it goes far enough our senior community. So, I'd like to see us move to that.
So, can I, is that going to be, I'm just asking, is that going to be the strategy that you use every year that you're going to increase at the exemption to keep their value straight, uh, flat all the time or? I, just so I know, I get some direction on what, what do I need to put in? Because I want to develop a policy around the strategy that's selected. So.
I was not thinking that.
I was not thinking that either. I was more thinking we look at it for this time now and.
Right. That same year. So, do you want to go through this? Every year? For process every year? I'm, it's what, what you prefer to do. So, we're asking for a strategy because the next, go to the slide about the tax rate. Because what you're, you're, again, is part of your discussion, it's not a presumption. If if the offset is to make sure that we have the revenues to maintain and operate the city, the offset is that, as you said, you're willing to allow the balance of the taxpayers, including those not over 65 and the commercial properties, to pay a little bit more so that the over 65 get this particular break. That's a strategy. Then the question becomes, is that a strategy that as you evaluate it each year, that's what we're supposed to come in with? This, based on what you did last year, this is what it's going to take this year and this is what the impact? That's what we're asking so we can be more refined in our efforts to help you in your decision making. And let me just throw in, if property values happen to decrease, are you willing to decrease that exemption to keep that number constant?
I'm sorry.
I mean, if you came back next year with a similar, I guess, stats, you would evaluate at that time, but unlike you, I was thinking at this moment.
We understand it's no guarantee, that's not what I'm saying. But we've been going through this exercise for so many years and you, and sometimes it's overwhelming and the amount of data and the statistics and this and that.
Sure.
So, we're trying to simplify to understand, that's why we're talking about a strategy. This is a fine strategy if this is what you choose. This is what we would lead with. That's what we're trying to understand as far as what you're, if this is what you're expressing today, granted, next year it could be different, right? But what's the lead? We haven't had a lead before. Now, we could have a lead.
I think after going, this is year one for me to go through this sort of analysis and everything. And it, it really has reinforced with, these are all just levers that are all connected and if you move one, it moves a bunch of other things. And so, the numbers that you select, the percentages, the senior exemption, to some degree, they're all arbitrary selections to begin with.
And it's what you're.
And it's what you.
Conceptually, what is.
I mean, the alternative is you cut back the budget, right? That's, that's, that's where.
That's what you're going to say.
That's a different, that's a different strategy, right? That you're, you run the city on fewer dollars.
Right, well, that goes to the MNO side of the equation because your debt side is a fixed somewhat to depending on what you do.
So, that's where I guess my internal.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but there's another strategy question here that y'all did talk about last time. Brad wasn't able to be here in the presentation. You saw the statistics. The school district numbers are coming down as far as the school age population in Coppel and the senior age population is growing at a faster rate than the school age population because it's reducing. You did talk about in the Vision 2040, about a focus on 55. Y'all started raising the question, wait, this is kind of a balancing act. So, by making this emphasis, we're going to continue to emphasis emphasize the potential of the growth of the senior population in Coppel, which has an impact on the school district, which you can talk to Brad about when he comes and makes the presentation. So, when you talk about levers, granted, you're not responsible for the school district or the tax rate or anything like that, but this goes to your philosophical question that you may be answering tonight by saying we're going to jump it up $25,000. That means that we're committed to allowing or making or encouraging the growth of the senior population in Coppel, which is, if that's philosophically where you want to be as a council, that's, that's perfectly fine. But that's how all that relates. It's not just isolated to our MNO and our tax rate. It's about what this community is in the future.
I probably, in my mind, see it as much of somewhat of an adjustment to a static number that hasn't been adjusted in many years. And this is a, initially, my thought is, maybe this is sort of this one-time adjustment, because we're seeing a spike in appraised values across the board this year. And I'm, that's, I think that's how I'm starting to think about it a little bit more than, you know, just looking at a vacuum of, well, we need to increase the homestead exemption. Well, that mean, something gets offset somewhere. I mean, something has to give somewhere. So, I, I think that's where my head is, a little bit. I don't, I mean.
That's, that's what I was looking more like, just.
Yeah.
But almost like a, like a correction, if you will, like, we're trying to just, you know, bump that up, and then, obviously, we'll look at it as, as years goes on, as what that percentage looks like, but just, from my understanding, it has been a while since that seventy-five thousand has been looked at. So I, I think bumping that up to a, a hundred thousand, with the understanding that that, you know, we do that offset and then understand that percentage will adjust as values go up.
Yeah, maybe, I'm just, just to make sure. The council has looked at this every year since I've been here. That's the two thousand twelve, and I can't speak to it, so I don't want, when you made this, it hasn't been looked at. It has been looked at.
The decision to change it hasn't been made for however long.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, no, understood.
One other comment, the seventy-five thousand senior exemption, I'm assuming whenever that became seventy-five thousand, the assessed value of senior homes was much, much lower than, well, I don't remember the number now, but I'm assuming it had to have been, right? Because it's been years.
Well, that, you know, if you go back to that chart, two thousand twelve, absolutely, those values weren't what they.
Yeah, just sixty percent what they are now or something.
They've been exceeding, the value's been exceeding that growth.
And that, so, once again, that's reinforcing. I think that's, this is sort of an adjustment to that number. That doesn't build up like the other homestead, the homestead exemption does, right? That's the sliding scale, right? It slides. This one doesn't slide.
That seventy-five, that seventy-five was more impactful back then, when it was first enacted.
Yeah, it was a bigger percentage of the average senior home value, is my guess. It had to have been, right? I mean, it just had to have been.
So if I'm hearing you guys, and I don't want to muddy the water, would we be better not? And maybe Bob, maybe I heard you wrong. Did you say we can't set the senior exemption as a percentage by statute?
I was looking, and it appears to be done to a flat rate with statute.
I, I would have more concern with that, based on a little bit of what Kim and Mike are talking about. Are we encouraging more senior housing, and if we put it on a sliding scale, that does become more impactful in future years, because it's gonna, it's gonna keep, it's gonna keep adjusting, right? This, moving it up twenty-five thousand is, let me think, this is, it's sort of a one-time hit, isn't it?
Well, it's cumulative over time, yes.
Well, one-time hit.
Your hundred thousand, just, just as you're saying about what the impact was of hundred, seventy-five thousand, maybe ten years ago, at some point, somebody's gonna be having around this table, the hundred thousand was only worth X.
Right, right, right.
So, and then, in time, it'll do whatever it's gonna do at that point.
It's not gonna automatically do it.
I mean, it's the seesaw, right? You're, you're decreasing your, your value, so.
But, that's sort of a one-time hit, except for the growth in number of senior houses in the future. Is that?
Right, and you can see.
That will increase.
Statistically, you'll be able to see that every year as well, and just much like you just talked about in the last, basically, ten years, it's more than doubled. I, I don't know if that's the same, yeah, I don't know if that's the same trajectory that it'll be on, you know, in the future years.
Yeah.
I know, Kim, I, I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you made that presentation like that, it was kind of like the, oh wow, that's an interesting number that, that, is that something that we're gonna keep a closer eye on? And I would love to see that reported on an annual basis to, to track that number, to see what those, to see if those senior exemptions are increasing as we move on.
You did get it during your January council pack, uh, retreat?
Yes.
That, that, it wasn't in a graph format, it was in a spreadsheet, but we know you like pictures, so.
There it is. I like graphs.
As Mike said, Brad Hunt will be here to talk in detail about the demographics, the changing age of the school. And it's pretty, I mean, it's, from his standpoint, it's pretty sobering, from Brad's standpoint. From Brad's standpoint.
You pointed it in.
No. I put it that way.
Oh, okay.
From, from Dr. Hunt's perspective, it's pretty sobering. Yes?
You know, when I think about this, you know, the economic engine of Capel is the schools. That's what brings people here. That's what drives the housing prices up and up and up. If we make this too attractive, that more and more seniors are staying, and we're not getting new, new blood in, so to speak, is that gonna be a problem long-term?
That'd be answered, yes, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, but so where do we get that balance, so we don't?
Overcorrect?
Yeah, overcorrect. That's a, that's the right word. But this is a one-time thing, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
Percentage would be, would be problematic, probably.
I think so too.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely agree. I think one-time thing, and then, you know, you'll get that initial jump, and then, if values keep going up, that one hundred thousand gets less and less impactful, so, but, I don't know, it's, I definitely understand the concerns about renewing the families that come in, so you keep that, the schools, it sounds so like sterile when you say it, but like, you know, that, that influx of new families coming in and kind of, you know, replenishing the schools with, with newer, younger students and stuff. It, it's definitely a valuable, we, we have to maintain that balance with the school district. I completely understand that.
So based on what I've heard this evening, we'll get you the deck tomorrow, you know, or next day or two. And we will focus in on the hundred thousand. We'll, we'll reduce the number.
It's ninety-five thousand.
The ninety-five thousand? That's the option.
Four, four.
Okay, well, anyway, we will narrow in on the number, I guess is what I'm saying, so that you're not looking at a bunch of numbers. And that way, there'll be clarity, if you will, in terms of, okay, this really what we intend to do.
And that will be to us on an agenda item in May?
It will have to be, yes.
And we would have the ability to alter that at that point, if the.
You, until you take that vote, you have the opportunity to alter it anyway?
You have to do it by July first.
July three. But we're trying to do it in May, so that we, because we are going into our budget with y'all, and we need to know what number we're shooting for. So we can't really wait. We need your decision.
So I guess just for clarity, to make sure I'm hearing what we're doing, we're only doing this one time. We're not changing the strategy. We're staying at the seventy-five and not making a hundred default.
Oh.
Well, you said we're doing it one time, and not.
No, you do it, it's ninety-five thousand.
Right.
For, for, until you change it.
Well, until you change it, and the likelihood of you actually lowering it probably is.
I guess, and I guess that, that's where I'm confused, right? Like, I'm, I'm fine doing that, but you were looking for direction of like, is this where we're staying? And then that becomes the norm until otherwise. And I keep hearing this one time, one time, one time.
Well, cause.
One-time adjustment.
Well, yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought our term was adjustment every year, and we're evaluating it, but we're just talking about one-time adjustment, and that stays as that, not changing it again up in, again, the following year, so.
Okay, remember, you're getting, you're getting, you've already given them a reduced tax rate. You've given that to everyone. So you have done something for everyone. You've reduced the tax rate by defeating the debt. So you've done that.
And this evening, you've also instructed us to give them a hundred dollar credit on their utility bill for sixty-five.
Yeah.
That's from Arpa.
Huh?
From Arpa, right, so.
I'm sorry?
That's from Arpa fund.
It's still a credit to the, I mean, it is.
And it's, that's also one time.
I hope so, unless.
I don't think we're gonna get another ten million dollars.
So, this is a change from seventy-five to ninety-five thousand, and it will be basically permanent at that point. But I think what the strategy is, we're not gonna go through this in detail.
Might reevaluate next year, go back to seventy-five.
Right, that's correct.
Or, or make it up.
Right.
I think that's, I think that's fair.
And we're gonna come to you and just say, here's what the, here's all the updated numbers.
That's what I want to make sure that we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah. All subject to change.
And, one thing I want, like, so several of us said a hundred thousand, and then I just heard ninety-five thousand, so I want to make sure that.
That figure was.
I think it's best on that number. You're saying it's ninety-five.
Option four is ninety-five thousand. That gets you.
To keep the percentage, to two ninety-six to two ninety-six, to make it comparable.
I like, I just liked a hundred, because of the optics, it's a clean number, quite frankly. And it's one-time adjustment, so, but.
Again, I mean, to be real clear, it's a one-time adjustment this year that has a growing number each year. As far as the revenue decrease, because as their values increase, the, as their values increase, more is exempted, because you also have the five percent growing on top of it.
And remember, it impacts the tax rate.
Don't let me confuse you.
Here's the thing, I'm not sure I agree with that, though, because, because.
I, I'm just saying, when you take the five percent, which they're increasing values, and you put a hundred thousand on it, their values are increasing, so the five percent is increasing. I'm just saying the amount of revenue from over sixty-five in time is a growing number.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The value, there, the value that's gonna be, I need to go to this one. The exemptions is gonna continue to go up. I mean, that's, I mean, it's a hundred thousand.
The exemption doesn't go low.
The five, don't lose sight, because they're getting five percent on top of it.
They're talking about, yeah, they're talking about stacking the homestead, plus.
Right. But, but you've given a special one hundred thousand to the seniors, so just like that number, I mean, I don't even know why we're. The point is, their number, over time, the amount of revenue from over sixty-five is not increasing. Maybe that's a better way to say it, at the same rate as the balance of the residential.
Right, that makes sense. If you adapt it.
Keep in mind that sixty, over sixty-five number is going up every year.
Yes.
Yes. I, I do think that's more of an impact, is the number of households growing.
It is growing up, and their average value is four hundred and something, so they're living in expensive houses who can afford.
With no kids.
Do you think it's only zero? Is that what you said?
I did not say, did not say that at all.
So that's what we will come to you with. Whatever number y'all decide right now.
I mean, what, what did y'all think, or Clint, what did Clint think?
I'm afraid you said, I'm afraid I'll go to jail. You're gonna end up being over sixty-five on the council. I'm afraid you said.
Age or age or so.
So what, fair point. What's our, what's the, what do we need to tell Kim to come back next month? Ninety-five, hundred? It's about a three dollar a month difference.
That's why I think, that's why I like.
Well, it's three hundred and forty-four thousand decrease in revenue compared to two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But your other chart showing the increase to the taxpayer was from thirteen fifty to sixteen, or something like that. Thirteen to sixteen, twenty-two.
Hundred thousand even.
I mean, that's, that's what I have to say, but I'm, I'm not gonna fight somebody on ninety-five either, though.
I got, I got three hundreds.
Hundred.
I got three hundred four. Although, if I could auctioneer, I'd be doing it right now.
So that, that will take, that will lower their value less than it was this year potentially, right? Because I just want to make sure that, right now, ninety-five thousand makes their value the same average. So you'll be lowering their value less than it was, giving share and reducing the tax rate for them.
Yeah. You're gonna lower it down to two ninety-one.
Yeah.
Based on the numbers we have today.
Yes, which are not gonna be the same that you get in May or in July. All right.
And what was the no new revenue number?
The, the no new revenue.
Rate, yeah, I'm sorry, rate. Two-two?
No, 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 I didn't count it. I, I did not calculate it. I, I based it on the three point four nine nine percent.
Okay, oh.
I did, the three point four nine nine is point five four two two zero two. Yep, as values go up, that rate comes down.
We good? Everybody good?
So I've written about a resolution to change the over sixty-five exemption to one hundred thousand dollars. And then next year, we'll look at a, a strategy.
Well, next, next year, Kim, we're just gonna come with, this is what the numbers are, based on hundred thousand.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
I think that's what we're saying, is hundred thousand now, and a hundred thousand moving forward.
And five percent on one, and just.
Okay. See, that's where I was trying to get clarity. So, to give you clarity, we're at a hundred.
It's at a hundred, and next year, we're just gonna show you what it looks like.
Show you what the numbers are.
That's our new number.
Based on those assumptions.
Okay, we are adjourned from work session. The time is nine-thirties. I need to go open executive session, and I'll be right back. Good evening. The time is nine-thirty PM. We have adjourned from work session. We are gonna be reconvening into executive session. Okay, the time is eleven fifty-two PM. We have reconvened into regular session of the Capel City Council. And we are on item number seventeen, necessary action from the executive session, and I will call on Mayor Pro Tim Brianna Hina-Hosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to extend the employment, I have to read your writing here. The employment agreement for one year through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with city, current city manager, Mike Land, oh, as, with Mike Land as city manager, based on new terms and conditions, and to continue the compensation and benefits as described. With the base salary increased at a rate of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, effective October first, twenty twenty-two. And to adjust other compensation based on the new salary, provided for an appropriate amendment to the employment agreement approved as a force they're in, and to form by the city, city attorney, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Long, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Long and Hina-Hosa Smith, Carol Nevilles, Hill, all opposed, or? Any opposed? Abstention? The motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number eighteen, there be no further business before this council. We are adjourned at eleven fifty-four.